Right. Good evening. Welcome to the August 24th Planning Board Meeting. Conducted virtually again. I will move to our first item on the agenda, which is the A. Excuse me one second. Is a public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan application of Simes Development and permitting LLC for 16 lot subdivision of land. At 11B 146B and 1442 Main Street and Wenton Highland Street. The hearing is held pursuant to the Land Court's remand order of June 23rd, 2021 in Simes Development and Permitting LLC. The Concord Planning Board at all. And so with that, we'll open the hearing. And Elizabeth, will we be hearing from the applicant?
Excuse me Burton, you'd want to take a roll call vote please.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. I'll go around. Linda. I'm taking attendance, not a vote, but attendance.
So Linda. I'm present.
Kristen.
Chair.
Kate.
Present.
And I am present, which makes four of us, which is a quorum. Okay. And Elizabeth, let me ask you, or do we anticipate hearing from the applicant at this hearing?
So I'm gonna have our town council is here and he can give you just an overview of the process for the board.
Thank you very much. Mina, if you want to take it from there.
Thank you Burton. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Mia McCarius, Anderson and Krieger Town Council. So the process from here is that you should have distributed to you a draft decision that follows from staff and our recommendations to align your prior decision with the court's decision. On appeal, since this is back on remand, my suggestion is that you review that decision. Discuss, ask any questions you might have. Certainly, since this is a new hearing, I think the applicant should be heard and if they have any comments on the on the draft, which was shared with their counsel earlier today or yesterday, actually Elizabeth can clarify that with some, some comments. And you, you can then close the hearing as you normally would deliberate on that. And to clarify, the quantum of vote that you need is a majority of the board has constituted. So that's with a seven member board, that's four members.
I got it. Okay. You mean as constituted, not as present tonight, a majority of those present tonight, but as constituted. So we need four votes.
Exactly. That's why I bring it up because I know you have less than a full, full slate available tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mina. That was very informative. So with that, let me ask the members of the board, did you all receive the draft remand decision or have an opportunity to review it? And do you have any questions, comments, proposed revisions to that plan? I'll just go around calling on folks. Linda, was there any items, any comments or edits you had?
No, it seemed to me that in terms of editing, it was consistent as far as I could see with what the court had determined and despite the fact that we might have liked a different outcome from the court, it looked like the decision was in line with the court's ruling.
Okay, thank you Linda. Kate, I'll go to you next if you have any input.
No comments.
Okay, thank you Kate. Kristen.
I didn't have any specific questions other than to discuss if we were going to talk about the lots or not.
Okay. Let's, let me table that for one second. Well, actually no, let's, let's address that. So which we've got the lots you're talking about for reserved for town specifically park purposes.
I don't necessarily need to discuss them. I just wanted to know if that was the plan.
Okay. So with we've presently got those identified that they're the same ones that were identified in the original approval. You want to suggest that that would be modified in any way or just open it up to the board to discuss?
Only if there was a suggestion for more appropriate lots. And so given these choices, I'm fine with, but I didn't know if we wanted to reserve the opportunity to discuss to make sure that we, you know, are certainly happy with the options.
Yeah, okay. And I am, I still am of the view that the lots that were originally chosen. Although I would note that they were chosen in part due to their being adjacent to lots that were proposed to be set aside for affordable housing purposes to facilitate through ways and the like for, for walk, people walking. I still think that they're likely the best lots to reserve, but Kate or Linda, do you have any other input on that particular point?
No, I saw that it looked like the east, that the easement is in here. So that there can be walking through from the lot.
We know the one that's on Highland Street, that park lot to the, to the circle.
Yes. Yeah. So it looks like the easement is in, and so that, that I think is a positive. And so I'm happy with the selections as they stand.
Okay. Thank you. And Kate, forgive me, I'm not sure if I gave you the chance to weigh in.
I agree with your position Burton.
Okay, thank you Kate. I did have one comment. It was on page 13. This paragraph about, I, let's see, I think it's one, two, three, the fourth paragraph. There is a sentence, I know the, the applicant's counsel provided us feedback about the, the, the finding being conditional upon the earth removal by law. And I, I, I agree with the applicant's counsel that that should be removed in, as it aligns with the the finding, the ruling of the court on, on not conditioning our approval on, on the ZBA's approval. I would like to suggest though, a slightly different wording, given, given that removal. And certainly when the board considered this, we were, we were we were assuming that there would be a process separate and in conjunction that would proceed our final endorsement of the plan under by the ZBA. And so, but since that's now not part of this approval. I would like to see those last two sentences change or the remaining sentences beginning with, where it says, the board further finds that the conditions in this decision are adequate measures. So on and so forth through the end of the paragraph, including the, the sentence that was proposed to be added by the planning department. I would want to see that read as follows.
Burton, sorry, but can you direct me page or page or item number again?
Yep.
Sorry.
So on page 13.
Elizabeth, could you share your screen if you're able to? But sorry Burton, but you're telling us to.
Okay, now I will, I'll see if we can get there.
Just getting on for this first item.
Okay. All right. Yes, right there. The, the paragraph that has the, the red line addition at the end. So that section, the board, and so the, the board further finds that the conditions of this decision are adequate measures to eliminate any short term or long term impacts pursuant to section 622. I'm okay with that language. I'm going to add to it. The next sentence I think should be removed at the suggestion of the applicant's counsel. Because it is, while the court didn't specifically strike that section, they did strike the, otherwise the requirement that our, our endorsement is conditioned upon ZBA approval of the earth removal permit. And rather than having that additional sentence there, which, which emphasizes a sentence further up, I would suggest the following for, to replace all of that language. That the board further finds that the conditions in this decision are, quote, adequate measures to eliminate any short term or long term impacts. Solely with respect to the findings required pursuant to section 622 of the conquered subdivision rules and regulations. And the board makes no finding as to their adequacy and meeting other requirements of any other zoning or general, or conquered zoning or general by law. The, the purposes, I, you know, I think that for this change is that we did, did not consider and the, the deliberations that are properly with the zoning board with respect to the earth removal permit. In our prior decision, we had suggested, you know, that ours was conditioned by that. We cannot do that. I just want to make clear that we're only making a finding with respect to that within our authority, which is the subdivision rules and regulations, not any other zoning or general by law, which is not the scope of the application before us here. So.
So Burton, can you just read that one more time?
Yes.
I'll try and get it.
So starting at 622.
Yep.
Pursuant to section 622 of the conquered subdivision rules and regulations. Comma. And the board makes no finding as to their adequacy in meeting other requirements of any other conquered zoning or general by law. You got it.
Burton, if I, if I may, can I just suggest two small tweaks there? That was one, I think Elizabeth caught the small typo. Since the section you're referring to, just to avoid confusion, is rules and regulations, not a bylaw. I might just add at the very end of the sentence there, any other conquered zoning or general by law or regulations.
Thank you very much. I, I like to, yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. So for the board. Any questions about that or in agreement on that modification? I see a head nod or two.
Yeah, I think that's a good change. Thank you Burton.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Other than that, I am good with the draft remand decision. Yep.
I mean, I guess the only other thing is that we use the word eliminate any short term or long term impacts. They're by no means are they eliminated. I think they're mitigated. Do we have the option to change that wording?
Well, I think that is a quote from, from subdivision rules and regs, probably the regs. And we are required to make a finding that they have done that, though I think, you know, we've looked at that issue in terms of what, what that, what it means to eliminate short term or long term impacts within our ability to consider those under the subdivision rules and regulations. I mean, I get, I'm trying to go to the same issue. I think that many people provided comments that they think there will be short term or long term impacts. Our findings are, are limited to what our authority under the, the subdivision.
Right. So I appreciate your addition there because I think qualifying that is as best as we can, as thoroughly as we can, so as not to be misquoted, you know, is important.
Okay. With that change, unless there's any other feedback from the board, I'd like to give the floor to the applicant if they have any comments or questions.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, but maybe Brad Latham or Don Pinto might on that recent edition.
Okay, thank you.
So let them speak.
Absolutely.
If I could be recognized, please.
Yes, please.
I'm Brad Latham, attorney in the permitting process for the applicant. My only request is that the decision by the land court judge be incorporated by reference in these proceedings. Thank you.
Amina, do you see any reason why the decision should not be, I guess, incorporated by reference, I guess, as as, I mean, it's, it's, it's materials that were part of this meeting, right? Is Elizabeth, are these, were these included in the, in the materials that were posted and as part of the meeting? I'm not exactly sure what incorporated by reference means in this context.
So the remand order is referenced in the opening paragraph of the decision.
And then decision, yeah.
Right. Mr. Chair, if I may, I guess I have the same confusion there. I, from the perspective of the applicant, the decision is referenced in the remand order. So it's clear why we're here. The decision is a binding judicial decision and wasn't appealed by the planning board. So I don't think there's any doubt that it's valid. But it's also not the findings of the board.
Yes.
It was contested by the board beforehand. So I'm not sure there, I've ever seen a decision of the land court incorporated in that fashion. We've made the changes. And my understanding from counsel litigated that decision on behalf of the applicant is with, with the exception of a few modifications they asked for in the paragraph you just modified. They were content with the way we made the other changes to the conditions.
Right. And I guess, I mean, to the, to the, the comment received. I can assure you that the decision was reviewed by the board and given due consideration and, and is was taken into consideration as we prepared this, this draft remand decision, decision or approval on remand.
So Burton, I'd also like to add the, in the third paragraph of the decision, the last sentence, the board's decision below is consistent with the remand order.
Okay.
So it's actually referenced twice.
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay. With not seeing any, let me just check. If I'm, I'm a Mr. Pinto, I believe the applicant suggested you might have a comment. I'll just give you the opportunity.
I don't have a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I think, Mina, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are ready at this point to proceed with a vote on the draft decision.
And just for clarity, just to, I would just close any hearing on remand and then move to a draft decision, which is.
Thank you very much.
So Burton, before you do that, I'll ask counsel if they opened it up for public comment and the applicant commented whether any other public is
Okay.
necessary or required to speak.
I certainly think it's, it's advisable, remand is a, is a little bit unusual, frankly, but I would just remind, I guess it's for the chair term mind, but importantly that, you know, you have the decision only on remand. So you're not revisiting everything, but I guess it would be preferable to ask for public comments.
Thank you for both of you for the suggestion. This is obviously my first time through a decision. Okay. So with that said, I'll take your advice and ask if there is any public comment, but please give due consideration to the comment just there from town council that we are, the, the purpose of this hearing is to consider solely the remand decision and the issues that are present in it and not to sort of start from scratch and in delving into the issues that we've heard so much about over the prior proceedings leading up to the original decision. So with that, if anybody has a comment. Please raise your hand or if you're on the phone, press star, I think it's star. Seven, is it six?
Star nine, maybe.
Star nine.
Let's find out.
I can double check that.
And, and I see, I see somebody raising their hand. You can also use the raise hand function too, in case we can't see you all at the same time.
Yeah, I can't see you all. So please use the raise hand function.
It's star nine if you are dialed in and not on a computer and, and please, when I identify you, say your name and address for the record, please. I see Mr. Bader has your, has his hand raised, please.
Thank you, Stefan Bader, Seven River Street. I was not able to read the entire new text of the decision, but I have a question and that is in the issue of taking without compensation was raised by the judge, was there any further discussion as to whether compensation could be offered at this juncture? So there is not a taking. Some sort of option payment, was that ever discussed by town council or the planning board in leading up to where we are tonight?
It was not discussed at any hearing of the, of the, on this matter by the planning board.
With.
So I'll, and if that was, and I'll let town council speak, but that issue was, was not part of the land court proceedings, but I, that's a different proceedings and I'll let town council expand on that.
Sure. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, the Mr. Bader's question, the compensation issue does arise sort of in both the federal and state litigation. The federal litigation is still pending. And then the state court side, the judge's finding was that the bylaw that the inclusionary housing by law, which is what required the planning board to reserve lots for for affordable housing purposes was entirely struck. So the basis for the compensation there is, is no longer there at all on the lots that are being reserved for park purposes. The subdivision control law permits reservation of those for three years with just compensation if they're purchased. So that, that he made a distinction between the two. But with respect to the affordable housing portion, that's, that's sort of entirely cast out for the planning board's purposes. Leaving aside, obviously town meeting or using eminent domain if it chose to. Town meeting and the select board, but it's no longer part of what's before the planning board.
Thank you for that clarification.
And thank you for your question. The, I'm just looking through, I'm not seeing any other further hands raised. So with that, I would make, I would move to close the public hearing. And I would ask for a second on that.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. I'm, I was at Linda, I think I got in there. Now I propose that we move to a vote on the, on the, the draft decision on remand and I would make, make a motion, well, a motion that we vote. So I, if I may, get a second on that and then we can go around and vote.
Second.
Thank you, Kate. All right. And I keep you, I keep your mute, unmuted Kate, I'll call on you first. Kate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Kristen.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
And I vote in favor of approval of the decision as well. And I'd like to thank Elizabeth for all the work that went into that. So with that, it is 7:25. We have five minutes until the next agenda item. And Elizabeth, unless there's anything else, we're done with that, right? Okay. Thank, thank you to the applicant. And what we can do here in the following next five minutes is just to, if, if, if we had one set of meeting minutes to review from the August 10th meeting, it was pretty lengthy minutes. I went through, I didn't have any editorial comments to make. I can, can I make a motion to?
I had just a couple.
Yep. Thank you, Kristen.
On, on the first page, under the West Concord paragraph, I think it was just a little typo. I would suggest it's a, the board expressed appreciation for the work done to develop the preamble. It said something like, um, the board of was appreciated, something like that. So it's just a little, little.
I'd close those out, but.
And then another one was on page six, the paragraph above, general comments. I would recommend it say, Mr. Boardman moved and Mr. Bozette seconded comma that the board. So they're kind of minor grammatical changes.
Thank you. Nancy, did you capture those? Or do you need Kristen to go back through that?
I've got it. Thank you Burton. Thank you.
Great.
I similarly have a couple of little typo issues. One on page three, the next to last paragraph. I'm not sure what should be there, but on, in the second sentence, it says, she pointed out the existing paper road. I'm not sure. Is it supposed to be paved road? I don't.
I think it's a, a term that refers to a street that has been approved, but not constructed. So oftentimes called the paper street or paper road.
Oh, thank you very much. I did not know that term. And then on the page four, the third paragraph, Mr. Flint questioned the amount of proposed fill and impacts to the existing groundwater levels. Mr. Marsh replied that the driveway is proposed about the groundwater level. Is it at groundwater level? I'm not.
Or above?
Above.
Is it above? Okay. Thank you. And that's all.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Nancy, did you get those?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Linda.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we adopt the minutes as amended of August 10th, 2021.
Thank you, Kristen. I'll second that. And with that, Kristen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Linda, how, how do you vote? Yes.
Yes.
And Kate.
Yes.
Yes. And I, I vote in favor as well. Great. I think then we've just got one minute until we come up to the 7:30 agenda item. And so we'll just wait for that.
Burton, this is when the, the board chair needs to sing a little song.
So during that one minute, if you want to go to the lot release for McCallor Lane.
Okay.
I can tell you that, that engineering division has reviewed the as-built plans and done a site inspection and reviewed the cost estimate remaining and found both to be satisfactory to grant the lot release for lot one. Lot two, three, and four would remain as part of the restrictive covenant.
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. So then I will move the, the board. The board should vote to release lot one from the restrictive covenant for the Hosmer Meadows subdivision and authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to sign the release.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Linda. With that second, Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you all. So that's done. And we are now at 7:30. Which brings us to the continuing public hearing on, on the site plan review. The application of Concord's Children's Center under section 11.8.7 of the zoning by law to convert the existing single family dwelling to a childcare center with a reduced parking to construct a 7,063 square foot addition and make related site improvements. Parking lots, subsurface stormwater drainage and landscaping at 250 Old Bedford Road parcel 4220. We've got the, the proposed draft decision from the, from the town planner. And I think at this point, I'd like to, Elizabeth, steer me if I'm wrong here, but I think open discussion amongst the board on the contents of the decision. And and whether there would be any revisions. And so let me, Elizabeth, is that, is that germane?
Sure, that's, that's fine. I can give at least the board an update. Last Friday, the applicant with their team went through and well, we did receive, I think on, on Monday, a letter from a butter. The applicant was already in the process of amending the elevations of the addition to change the pitch in the roof because the height of the building was, I think a foot and a half too high. It was over the. the height of the building was, I think, a foot and a half too high. It was over the thirty-five foot height limit. So the applicant did submit revised plans this morning that were reviewed by the building commissioner. The existing conditions plan shows the two lowest points of the farmhouse. The average of those two lowest points, one is at one thirty-five, one is at one thirty-six. So it is those two points, the average would be elevation of one thirty-five point five. So the maximum ridge height allowed would be one seventy point five. The revised plans with the change in the pitch in the roof have the elevation at one seventy. I think it's point two five. And I see Molly's saying yes, so thank you. So the building commissioner did confirm that it is within the thirty-five height limit, but is recommending an additional condition that prior to the framing inspection, the applicant shall have a surveyor verify the height of the structure is thirty-five feet or less.
Thirty-five feet or less from the the measurement line as of per the further regulation.
Yes, from an elevation of one thirty-five point five to one seventy point five.
Okay, if I may, done that down for me, the they've revised the roof. The building inspector says they're they're they are under the thirty-five foot height limit, but is requesting a condition to confirm that once they have framed it.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think we should add that condition that the building inspector's a recommendation. And I guess I would open our discussion by saying, first of all, I am grateful. We received about the amount of public comment that was insightful and informative. I haven't gone back and counted, but there were in the range of eighty written comments. Lots of feedback at the public prior instances of the public hearing. And I know I went through them very carefully and closely. I want to emphasize that what what we're looking at here is a site plan review that we're considering a site plan for an educational institution, which our zone our zoning bylaw that section eleven allows us to review, but we cannot prohibit approval of a site plan, but we can subject it to reasonable conditions in accordance with our zoning bylaw as allowed under the Dover Amendment and the reasonableness standard of Tussi Medford, which is a which is case law on what sort of reasonable conditions we can put on an educational institution. So some of the comments that were specifically raised, many of them were focused on parking and how we whether whether the applicant is eligible for parking and and what the minimum required amount of parking is under the alternative method of of calculating that. And so given given those comments we've received, I I'd like to speak to that directly. I know that in the planning, this in the in the proposed decision, the the there's, well, first of all, let me just read the specific provision here. Let me pull up the document. Okay, the requirement is one space for every teacher and employee, one space for visitors, plus one space for every six children. However, the planning board may allow a reduction in the number of required parking spaces. This is not parking relief per se. It's not a special permit, but we're allowing a reduction in the number of required parking spaces for the purposes of improving site utilization, but not to increase permitted enrollment. If the number of spaces provided is adequate to provide one space for every teacher and employee and to support without detriment to the neighborhood, drop off and pick up areas for the maximum number of children arriving and departing the facility at any one time in accordance with a traffic, a parking and traffic management plan approved by the planning board. The applicant is seeking the reduction in number of spaces. So we're under that second calculation, which means we need to find that there is a a sufficient number of parking spaces to to provide one space for every teacher and employee. And and well, before I get there, we can go to that calculation if it's shown that they are improving site utilization, but not to increase permitted enrollment. The applicant in this case is consolidating two existing educational institutions or sites into one. So to the degree it makes sense to consider what it means to increase or not enrollment for a a new site. I think it makes most most sense to look to the existing sites that are being consolidated, not one or the other or none, but both. The information provided in the decision shows that they are is clearly not increasing enrollment from the two sites and into this one. And the applicant has has stated that they are doing so that they're seeking a reduction in parking spaces to improve site utilization. And some of those instances were specifically called out in the draft decision. I would note that the 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 bylaw doesn't say what site utilization, improving site utilization specifically pertains to. In my mind, that can mean all manner of things, but not to increase permitted enrollment. So it could mean that it allows for a more spacious building for preservation of green space or improved play space outdoors. I think that the applicant has shown that they are seeking to reduce parking for a number of different reasons, including the ones I've just highlighted. And I think using this our standard of review under this, they've met that requirement. Going from there, if considering they've met that requirement, we need to determine what it means to have an adequate number of spaces for each teacher and employee. And to support, I would note that language is to support without detriment, drop off and pick up areas for the maximum number of children arriving and departing the facility. It does not say that it requires additional spaces or some minimum number of spaces for for the children's drop off and pick up. So I would hold that, or it's my it's my view that the maximum number of space or the minimum number of spaces has to be at least one space for every teacher and employee, which gets us to twenty based upon the applicant's materials that they provided. And then it's any number of beyond that, including zero as a number that is adequate. As as long as there is, we have a finding that without detriment to the neighborhood, drop off and pick up areas for the maximum number of children is done in accordance with the parking and traffic management plan approved by the planning board. A reference has been made to off-site parking spaces at Ripley, which the the applicant has arranged with the school department for actually now five spaces at Ripley. And in my view, those those spaces are not required to meet the minimum number of parking spaces. I think twenty is a required minimum because that's the stated number of staff and teachers, but they are an essential part of the of the parking and traffic management plan. And so I would want to see as a condition as as is proposed that the traffic, that the traffic management plan that that we require that they they formalize that agreement with the 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 school department and that be an element of the traffic management plan. I'll pause there and ask if, because this is really one of the foundational issues. Linda, Kristen, Kate, if you have any questions about my analysis there on on seven seven two one.
I I appreciate the clarification for all of us and everyone listening. And I think also that the traffic management plan or that the schools plan for drop off in different time zones, I think, or different time chunks that we've acknowledged as well and that the one of the concerns that we heard from the public was about a queue of cars that might contribute to traffic. And I I think from what we read and and the feedback is that with the different time slots, that that should not be a significant impact.
Yeah, I think we had both the applicant plus the the input from the Concord Police and and from our the outside consultant weighing in on that. We've provided a lot of feedback on that, what what the pickup lane should look like. We addressed the the trash turnaround. And yeah, I I I've gone through the traffic management plan and you know, it identifies a peak hour when there would be eighteen staff on site. They could, of course, park up to twenty, but they their traffic management plan has them moving at least two offsite. Potentially up to five offsite. And they and and it would appear to me that that that's peak hour problem of around twelve, twelve thirty is a short duration and that they would be able to manage a pickup queue during that time in accordance with their plan. Kate or Linda, did you have any input on on this parking point?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did a comment, Karen. I agree with the analysis and in terms of, as presented in Elizabeth's decision, in terms of the enrollment in in terms of that this clearly is not an expansion of an expansion of enrollment. I I do, I did think a lot about their proposal for twenty spaces on site when the requirement's thirty-three. I think that's they're not coming to us asking for two or three less, but you know, thirteen spaces less, it's a third less, it's 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 a lot. And if if that's if that's okay, then like are the requirements wrong in the bylaw, the the minimum requirements? So I did I did really think about this and then I thought about, you know, and it seemed like they were kind of making it fit, but everything had to work like exactly right to work. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't work that way, like what's the contingency plan? Doesn't really seem like there is one. But I think a strong counterpoint to that is that, and you referenced this, is that the outside consultant looked at their plan, thought it was okay. So that I I definitely put a lot of weight in on that. We don't always have the benefit of an outside traffic consultant to weigh in on things. So I I definitely rely a lot on the opinion that he rendered that it was okay. I think the traffic management plan is okay. It's it shows diagrams of the way that the center kind of wants things to work and the way that they've kind of managed to rationalize it working, but I'm not sure what will happen if it doesn't work that way. There's just no, you know, room for error. There's and so I think it's difficult, but I I I I really just, you know, trust that it's going to be up to them to make it work. It's I don't I don't think if it's if it's not working, it's not going to work for them. They're going to have to figure figure it out. And so I really, I I think it's it's okay. And I but I I just, I guess I just want to express my thoughts out loud in terms of thinking through the the seriousness of coming to us with a proposal of, you know, that has twenty spaces where the minimum was was thirty-three. It's it's not easy to approve, but I think we've gone through the steps of demonstrating that it's possible that it's we have the basis of approving it.
Thank you.
So Burton, I'd also, just to Kate's point, like to add in the draft decision, it reiterates what's in the zoning bylaw that should there be an issue, whether it's the community safety officer or Concord Police Department sees a safety issue or if there's complaints about non-compliance with the conditions of this site plan and enforcement action is taken by the building inspector, building commissioner. It is in the zoning bylaw and referenced in this decision that the planning board does have the authority to amend that that traffic management plan to ensure compliance with the the rest of the findings made in this decision. So at that time, you know, should should there be a problem, which you know, there there never has been a problem even at the West Concord where things are even tighter than this site. But the planning board would at that point have the ability to have the applicant come back. And they would have to document how they will change their traffic management plan so that they are in compliance and so.
But what are the options? Like, we're not going to have the ability to to ask them to decrease their enrollment because it's too many.
They that 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 may be, that may be a requirement.
Oh, okay.
You know, so for them to, you know, be in compliance with that traffic management plan and that those safety issues do not come about, that may be something that they would have to do.
Okay, so that is that is actually a substantive contingency plan. Like, if this doesn't work, they're going to have to have fewer people there.
Well, and they may, that might be one. And and I agree that I think it's in the best interest of the center to make things work. They want all of the students and families to be safe for sure. So I think that, you know, and we've heard, you know, significant support from the families who I think will continue to work if they need to, you know, change their staggered drop off times and things like that. I think, you know, where the issues are, kind of those unexpected, you know, inclement weather days. That's kind of what we've seen at elementary schools and and other schools with drop off and things like that. And, you know, I think this is going to, you know, force everyone to just kind of pay a little more attention to the the drop off schedule.
And and to that point, Kristen, I I think that an element of the traffic management plan is revisiting on an annual basis. The applicant has said the 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 drop off planning that and and the timing of when when students can be dropped off. As you may be aware, I mean, it's been evident in the materials, but you know, they they don't have everybody, unlike an elementary school, not all the students show up at the same time. They aren't staggered starts. And the applicant would be revisiting that on an annual basis to make sure that it was working. And just one point in terms of, you know, your concern about the minimum number of spaces and is that wrong? You know, I I would counter that there's not that 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 minimum of thirty-three. There are two methods of calculating parking requirements and but one which sets a strict sort of objective minimum, another which, if they meet certain requirements, which I I ran through, allows for a different calculation that doesn't have a minimum beyond the number of required for teachers and employees. So, you know, I think that's an acknowledgement that, you know, for a school drop off that there may be alternative methods of 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 managing vehicles that need to come through and be there transiently, you know, for a brief period of time while they drop off a student.
Now, Burton, does that show well in the decision? Because I think that's one of the key things that that Kate was just kind of picking up on, that it feels strange to make a decision, say, you know, yes, we're we're saying that thirty-three is the minimum, but we're going to grant you twenty. Whereas you're saying with this alternative calculation, it is not so much of a stretch for us to make that decision.
I I think it is reflected. I I do have a couple tweaks that I would propose to the to the decision language, not really directly to that point, but in this parking section. I I mean, I think that there's a lot of language that goes towards that they are in increasing utilization of the property. And that that gets the and and they are not increasing enrollment. So that gets them to that second type of calculation. And and that was that was, I I to me, it was evident. What I would suggest as a modification is, I don't think we should be saying that they've met a they they're providing a a total of twenty-five spaces. I believe that those, the additional five spaces that are, they have, they have gained access to at Ripley are not part of the site plan meeting the minimum requirements under under the bylaw. Rather, I view that as part of the traffic management plans as we're seeing here on the on the screen. So I would I would take out the that the line that says it says a total of twenty-five spaces. I think they are providing twenty spaces on site. And then as part of the traffic management plan separately, they're providing five spaces and that their obligation to provide those spaces and then the terms of those spaces of how they acquire those spaces. That's really part of the traffic management plan, not the specifics of the of the approval required under seven seven, which what's the number, seven seven two one. So Elizabeth, you 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 jumped ahead. You've got it though on the screen. That is essentially exactly what I would I would provide. I think I think that's, is that is that the section I'm looking at? Oh, you've got it.
Yeah, so that's.
What can I, while you're on that first page, there was one other tweak I wanted to make up there, which you said that they were applying for parking relief. And I think that site plant, the site plan language is more about that there's, there can be a reduction in required parking. Oh, in the next paragraph, the applicant is requesting relief from parking to allow twenty onsite spaces. The the paragraph that has the the red lines in it, then one more down. So I would change that word relief to is requesting a reduction in required parking. To allow twenty.
And there was one typo on this page.
Okay. And then going.
Sorry, can we, before we move on, I like, I think that this decision says there's a minimum required of thirty-three. So Bert, and you seem to be saying that the minimum required is twenty. So I don't know how to I guess, Elizabeth, do you agree that the regulations could be interpreted to mean that there's a minimum required per the regulation of twenty? I don't quite understand that.
So the 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 initial zoning, the initial calculation for parking for a childcare center is thirty-three. And that calculation can be reduced to one space for every teacher and staff. And I I can go to that section. So so the requirement is thirty-three, but then that may be reduced for the purpose of, you know, site utilization, but not increase the number of enrollment. So it can be reduced down to one space for every teacher and employee and to support without detriment to the neighborhood, drop off and pick up areas. So the the requirement's thirty-three and it can be reduced down to this calculation.
As far, it can be reduced.
Which would be no, yeah, it would be, you know, based on the traffic management plan, they have provided information to show that twenty is adequate for one space for every teacher and staff and not to the detriment of the neighborhood, drop off, pick up, you know, and drop off and pick up.
Got it. Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't I mean, I I couldn't, I could.
You know, we.
Well, it's, it would be instead of third required thirty-three spaces without a traffic management.
I would say, well, I would just say, I think it's better to just say like the default minimum requirement of thirty-three spaces or something.
Well, it's kind of like, it's more like instead of the well, no, it's.
I if we can't, you, I would just for clarity, I would say, instead of the thirty-three spaces that would be required without a traffic management plan.
Okay, okay. Let's say without a traffic management that the board has found to be
Well, this is
mitigate the concern, you know, the language as management plan.
I I like where you're going with that. This is the preamble.
So this is the project, this is the project description. So we're, you're moving down to here.
Yeah. And and so let's let Kate, let's pick up your point down here. There was one instance of the word required up there, though, where you've made the edit that needs to come out, but if we can stay here. What I, my proposal here is that's an instance says this is a total of twenty-five spaces. I would take that out because in my opinion, we're not finding that they're providing twenty-five, a a the a minimum of twenty-five spaces. I think they're finding they're they're providing twenty spaces on site. And then as part of their traffic management plan, they are incorporating the use of five spaces, five spaces that are at at the at the Ripley School.
Yeah.
I think saying that there additionally is, yeah, as part of.
Have to be deeded or something if they
Well, there's very or leased or
Yeah, something.
It's hard to say what would be the, what would be the
But I mean, I get, I understand your point.
Yeah.
Just, just a a question about those spaces. Will there be five dedicated spaces that will say Concord Children's Center spaces? Or are they just sort of hand wave their five spaces?
Well, there's after, after speaking with the school superintendent, she had no issues with providing five dedicated space, more than likely, they're going to be the first five spaces as you come into the lot because they're going to be the closest.
Right.
So she had no issues with that.
I think, I think that's why we want to see it as the, you know, the that formalized as part of the as as a condition of approval, Linda. I think, you know, the you similar questions were brought up by public comment. And I think, you know, even though it's part of the traffic management plan and we we'd want to see how that gets formalized.
So that's already in the draft.
Yeah. I've got you.
Bert, and did you say you want the word required to come out of the second sentence there, that same paragraph?
No, it was up above in the preamble that no, this is, so and it says in the second last line there, it says as part of the traffic plan, instead of the thirty, take out required thirty-three spaces that would be required. And I and Kate, I mean, hopefully that satisfies your
So there were a couple of other minor typo edits if the board wants me to go through these now.
Please do. Yep.
And then there were two. There were two conditions that were reflected in finding, well, two findings that did not get reflected as conditions that I'm, I would propose to add. One deals with the requirement for the garbage pickup time windows. And then the other one deals with the snow removal. And so the board has a standard condition regarding snow removal that would be added. And then the garbage pickup, when I get to that one, I'll I can show the board. So page four. These suggested edits were from Linda. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
When I get to the get to the So this section would also based on the finding in the previous section, this section would be similarly edited to what you just did under the parking section. So it would be this section here, removing this and adding the other words regarding the traffic management plan. This is also where I
Are we in section eleven here now that you consider?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes. This is where I would where traditionally the board would add the comment regarding the requirement for snow removal, so that it does not impact the arrangement of parking.
Yeah. If if we've not otherwise addressed that, let's please add it there.
And then I was looking for I don't think we're there yet. And it was under oh, here it is. And then when we got to, this is the section regarding mitigating the impact from the trash pickup. So this would be reflected as a a condition as well regarding the time period for trash pickup.
Elizabeth, what happened with the telephone pole issue?
So the last time when the board had a pretty lengthy discussion about this. That so I did have a long conversation with CMLP. It is not a CMLP pole. It is a Verizon pole. And there would definitely be a significant issue as far as the cost, but more importantly, the timeframe in which to move that pole. There there are polls that have been requested to be moved and year, over a year later, they they don't get moved. But when the applicant did look at you know, the ability to move that pole and moving the driveway over would then begin to impact. The trash would be, you know, closer to the property, Butters property line. The layout of the parking actually would get, would be less than the twenty spaces that they have now. So that was part of the board's discussion, I think, at least one meeting ago, two meetings ago. But ultimately the whole issue of moving it would would not make any significant improvement for the project as it's currently designed.
Okay, thank you.
And then I think that was it as far as the edits that I have.
Okay. Any further comment from the board? And if not, I'll ask the applicant, Elizabeth, it's Jermaine, forgive me as I'm learning it here to see to see if there are any other additional comments or concerns for the draft from the applicant. And then I ask for public comment. Is that appropriate at this stage of the public hearing? Yep, okay. All right. So I guess I would ask Pat Nelson or other people on your behalf, Pat. If there are any comments or concerns you have on the on the draft that was circulated or comments to make. And if you could identify yourself.
Yeah, I'm Pat Nelson, fifty-two Cottage Lane, and the executive director of Concord Children's Center. I don't think that Mark Bribowski is on now, but I would defer to him if there is.
Yeah, I think he is on by by phone, Pat.
Okay.
Mark, if you, if you want to speak, dial in, you press up pound nine to be heard and we can recognize you.
So I think Mark is good with this.
Okay.
And I am good with this. And I appreciate the time that the board has taken to consider.
Thank you very much.
Bert, and before you go to public comment.
Yes, please.
Um, I think that the things that we heard from the public last time, we heard, you know, certainly a lot of support from Concord Children's Center families and alumni and things like that. We definitely heard that. And then we heard concerns from a Butters and other other folks in the neighborhood about the parking, which we just talked about, but also about the kind of the size of the new building going in. And I just wanted to kind of frame the conversation that happens next and the and the additional public input that we get in terms of, you know, what the planning board's ability to weigh in on this is. And I think you did a good job of that with the parking, so.
Okay, thank you. Right, I mean, we this is a site plan review. The we we specific specifically for an educational institution, we, there are you know, legal constraints, protections, what have you for those types of projects. And while we can propose reasonable restrictions, it would not otherwise, it would not be detrimental or or otherwise impacting a discriminatory manner in educational institution. And we can propose reasonable standards. And I think we've, we've gone through, looked at the application of the bylaw and and but, you know, reviewed this in accordance with that standard. I do see one hand raised, Mr. Half. If you would like to state your name and your address and you've got the floor.
Thank you. Ten Philip Farm Road, direct to Butter to the development. There are several thing, several comments. I, you've addressed part of what the issues that we raised. I I want to make a clarification because I think that the height is still being misinterpreted. As you look at the section within the bylaws, six point two eleven. It talks about there are two sentences. And it talks about the base elevation is the average of the elevations of the ground with the two corners of the lowest lowest foundation wall of any existing structure meet the ground. The absence of an existing structure, the base elevation shall be the average elevation measured as indicated above of the ground at the location on the site where the new building is to be placed prior to any grading or mounding. So I think that before you settle on your statement that it's compliant that the proponent needs to provide a footprint of the proposed building on top of the existing contours. I believe it's still one foot too high and is noncompliant because it exceeds thirty-five, thirty-five feet in height. I believe that the two lowest elevations are elevation thirty-four and thirty-five, not thirty-five and thirty-six. I I made, I I made those statements in my email of August twenty-second. So further modification is necessary, in my belief, to those plans. It it does impact us as direct in a butter in terms of any view that we might have left and and shading onto our property.
Okay.
The the second point relates to the parking. And I am concerned that you are allowing the addition of the two populations of two separate daycare childcare centers without looking at the addition of the parking that services each of those daycare centers. You have made it, it seems totally illogical to me that you would not think about what the existing parking is in each of those like locations before you grant approval of this reduction in parking. And I believe that if you add both, I haven't gone over there, I will, but I think that if you add both areas of parking in each location, you would find that there are well over thirty-three parking spaces combined. This, this site plan is relying on drop off in a lane that is not a parking space. And while that might be appropriate for older children, my observation at both sites is that usually the parent has to get out of their car and escort their child in. And I don't think that there are enough teachers on site to be able to escort every child out every time that there is somebody arriving or departing. And also, we all know how young children are. They it's not like dropping off your high school or at school, drop and run, it is usually a five-minute process at least. And I've observed that in both locations. The other aspect regarding the parking, you are therefore making the determination that the proponent is improving the site utilization. That's what you state, that's what you state. However, when you look at the site plan, all of the setbacks are the minimum required site setbacks that are planted. And the setback from the wetlands is a requirement, not optional, a requirement of the Conservation Commission. So I don't understand how you're improving the site utilization. I think you're barely meeting the minimum in terms of the setbacks. And I do believe that it is to detriment. in terms of the setbacks. And I do believe that it is to detriment of us and the neighborhood that if you don't require the full number of 33 parking spaces. I would also add that the five parking spaces at Ripley, my understanding is that there's a leasing of land by law. And that requires a public hearing, two public hearings, or at least a public hearing advertisement by the select board and only the town manager and the select board can offer up town land for alternate use, not the superintendent schools. And we found that out when we asked, when I asked the superintendent of schools why the lease at Ripley had been terminated, and she referred me to the town manager. So I do not believe that any space, any spaces you're counting on up there are noncompliant and will not. I mean, as far as I can tell, the town manager can turn around tomorrow and say, I'm sorry, that wasn't compliant with the town by law. And therefore, your your decision is inaccurate. Particularly if you feel as though those spaces are in fact required. In my email also of August 22, I included a spreadsheet of the density allowed within the zoning by law in order to meet the 20 parking spaces. And that would have a reduction in both the number of teachers, visitors and children that should be allowed in this location. Again, we don't object. We in fact appreciate everything that Conquer Children Center does. But I do believe that approving this plan will be to the detriment of the neighborhood and the immediate Butters. So I disagree with the finding that's indicated in your in your decision. And I didn't mention this in any of my emails, but I did not see any calculations that the plan was consistent with the tree preservation by law. As we know, there are 19 trees that are being torn, taken down. The tree preservation by law requires that there be a replacement in terms of caliper. And I won't get into the details, but I did not see any calculation associated with that. We believe that that is very important because the trees, they pull a lot of the excess groundwater. And we've had some very heavy rains and they do transpire. And they take a lot of that water out of the ground. And we feel that while compliant from a from a perhaps from a civil calculation, we do not believe that it's compliant with the tree preservation by law. All of those are listed, all of those bylaws are, I'm sure you're familiar with, and I thought that they would be part of the decision. And if if not, if that calculation hasn't been made, then I think that you need to put in a requirement that that calculation be completed and planting be done accordingly.
Okay. I thank you very much, Mr. Half. And I did receive your email and I appreciate that as well. It I think that maybe there's a number of issues and they 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 all deserve addressing. First, if I may, with respect to height, I think I'd like to defer to Elizabeth and Molly, I think, is Molly is 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 that your your area? If you could address those comments specifically that the, I guess, Mr. Half, the the point is that the baseline from which the calculation is being made, you believe is is incorrect. Is that right? Okay, let's let's take these one at a time.
So, yep, so Burton, I did. The building commissioner is the one that interprets the zoning by law and makes that determination. So I did speak with him this afternoon and he did review the plan and so there is an existing structure on the property and that is what they use for determining that calculation. The two lowest points have been surveyed and shown on this plan. And next time Molly sends me a CAD drawing, she's going to turn all these little boxes off. But the two lowest corners are 136 at this corner and 135 at that corner. So that the average of those two is what I stated in the beginning would be a 135.5. So the max ridge height allowed is 170.5. And the revised drawings. If I don't, if I don't blow my computer up. Have a maximum ridge height of 170.25. So with this narrow margin is the reason the building commissioner is requesting that prior to the final framing inspection that a surveyor verify that the ridge height is 170.25 or less. You're you're muted, Burton.
Thank you very much. It's so, Mr. Half, on these calculations and and the 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 basis from which the the baseline is 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 taken. It's my read of the bylaw that if there's an existing building, it's from those corners as indicated in it. And that deference to the building commissioner is the enforcement agent of that or written and the member of town staff that makes that determination that I defer to the building commissioner. I want to make sure I get to all your points, Mr. Have I see your hand up? But do you want to clarify if you think that that's if we're missing your point on that?
Yes, I believe you are. I am also an architect. I've been doing this for 40 years. And every time I've gone through a process like this, we are required to show the footprint of the proposed building. And then you look at the lowest point of the footprint where the proposed building is going. And you can average the proposed lowest with the existing lowest. And so I disagree with that interpretation. And if I don't have the full bylaw before me, that section, but I believe that because the addition is twice the size footprint of the existing house, that my interpretation would be more accurate. If it were not twice the size of the existing house, then then that would be a different point. So I disagree with that interpretation and would formally request a re review of that and a drawing, a footprint drawing that dashes in the existing or the proposed addition over the top of the existing contours.
Okay, I get. So if I may simplify this, as I am not an architect with any experience, the the point you're, I think your point in principle is that because the new building is is twice the size of existing building that we should use the new bill effectively, the new building baseline calculations rather than one that we would use for an existing building.
That is correct. And you, yes, that's correct.
Elizabeth, could you?
So I will, yeah, so I will add that is not a requirement of the zoning by law. It's never been a requirement of the zoning by law. It is not the building commissioner's determination. And he is the code enforcement officer, and that is how height has been measured. And so I appreciate Mr. Half's opinion, but it is solely within the jurisdiction of the building commissioner. And it is not even within the jurisdiction of the planning board to begin to interpret that section of the zoning by law differently than how he has determined.
Okay. If I can move to the second point, Mr. Half that you raised was that the that it it seems that it would be reasonable to if you if we're considering the consolidation of the of the the student population of two facilities into one, then we should our determination on the adequacy of the parking for this consolidated facility should be based upon the existing parking for those two facilities. And I get the point and it makes common sense. But I don't think that that's that we're given that latitude by the terms of the bylaw. I think the bylaw says that it's a threshold matter of is it site utilization? That is it an improvement of site utilization, but not increasing enrollment? And then and and that's a determination that I was looking to when we were considering the two different schools that are being consolidated. From there, you get into a de novo consideration as to the adequacy of the traffic management plan and meeting a minimum required parking for that site based upon the number of teachers and and staff on that site. So I don't think we can look to, I mean, you know, the the existing, the existing buildings could be located in and and facilities could be located in very different places with very different parking available to them. I will, I will grant that it is a little strange to talk about whether enrollment is increasing or not when there is no facility on the site today. You know, some of the thoughtful comments we received did point to looking to to the enrollment of the existing Ripley facility and the Emerson facilities. And and that seemed reasonable in my in my opinion, to be able to look at both of those facilities to meet that threshold issue of as to whether enrollment is increasing. With respect to your third point on, yeah.
Burton, I can also add, and maybe I can go through some of these. I can also add that the current enrollment permitted enrollment for Ripley is 76 children and the applicant is proposing. Let me see.
72?
72. So it's not even whether it's a combination. It's it's they're they're not even going above the current permitted enrollment at Ripley. To the point regarding the the wetlands by law and the applicant's use of the site, the wetlands by law has a 25 no disturb requirement and a 50 foot no well, yeah, no build policy. So the applicant has met to the extent that the natural resources commission on both their no 25 foot no disturb requirement as well as their 50 foot no disturb policy, which is a policy. It is not a requirement under the town's wetland by law. In regards to the tree protection by law, the applicant has gone through the landscape architect has gone through and done the tree preservation calculation. If you look at the existing conditions plan for the tree removal and the current landscape plan, the applicant is replacing just with trees 82 inches, which would equate to my argument to 82, that's half of what they would be allowed to remove. So that would be 164 inches. And then as far as the five spaces at Ripley, after speaking with the superintendent, she has the ability under the facility managing facilities. And so it is her opinion that she can allow is part of managing the parking the children's center to park in those. It is not a formal lease that they're entering into with the town as it is with the use of a building or use of long term use of property. So those, that was the conversation I had with the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of that. I really appreciate that. I think you you've covered. Mr. Have I had your that is your sixth point and a couple of other points, though. And the fifth point regarding leasing of land on utilization, how is it improving the utilization of the property? You know, I looked for a lot of guidance within the bylaw and and did a lot of listening in terms of to to the to the public comments we received in terms of what what it would mean to improve utilization. I think a lot of people sort of jump to the conclusion that that means reducing previous service. So you're reducing parking to have, you know, you're 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 creating additional open space or you're otherwise doing something along those lines. And and I don't think there's anything in the in the bylaw that 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 requires that sort of one for one exchange. I frankly think that it could very well be that you are creating additional classroom space for the same number of children, but have, you know, for example, having a gym in in or, you know, in interior play space, that that could be site utilization in improvement in site utilization. It could be additional, you know, outdoor play space, or it could be different things. There is not much in the bylaw, which it just defines what it means to improve utilization. As in fact, I don't, I don't see anything there. With your with respect to your point that it is detrimental and as a director butter, we I certainly always listen directly to the views of Butters in terms of what they think a project will have on them or their neighborhood. And we and and I I think in almost every proposal before that the 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 planning board, we hear positives and negatives on on on, you know, in in either case. And we've got to look at it through the standard of what have we been? Well, first of all, take into consideration what we've been told about what types of impacts will 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 there will be. We've listened to the outside consultant on traffic impacts and on the parking management plan. We've we've, I know that the applicant has has proposed higher fencing along the property line adjacent to your house and preserving land, the the architecture of the building, which is consistent with the the historical context and 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 what the community, you know, a large number of applicants have expressed as being a positive for the community and viewing all of that through the standard, which is that we are allowed under the Dover amendment and judicial interpretations of that in terms of what are reasonable limitations that can be put on utilization by an educational institution. I respect your opinion and I'm very glad you you've provided it. I hope I've I've adequately explained my my thinking on it. With that, let me, I see Mr. Nagler's hand raised.
Can I can I also, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, please. Thank you.
And kind of using this as an excuse to go back over some stuff. The traffic management plan and Mr. Half's discussion, you know, reminding me, okay, like what what are the traffic impacts on these adjacent neighborhoods? So it's the potential for people to park there. And then there's the potential for traffic delays and for the intersection to get snarled up. So with regard to the traffic management plan, because that's what we're depending on to to evidence the effectiveness of their proposals and potentially to revisit if things aren't working well. Does it make sense to put in the trap? I think that the school has committed to instructing parents that they may not park on those adjacent neighborhoods. So can we put that in the traffic? I guess I recommend that goes into the traffic management plan. And I know that the town safety officer has said, you know, so that's the it seems to me that it's like that's the first line of what we're going to do is tell parents not to park there and they're pretty compliant, pretty, a pretty compliant group. And the safety officer says, if they if they are, then we can take it to the next step.
I'd clarify actually on that.
Okay.
I think with respect to parking of construction vehicles, the safety officer can come along and say, no, you can't park construction vehicles on these on these streets during the construction. And they and they would do that with respect to parents and and people parking. The school is going to instruct people, but these are public rights away that all of our taxpayer dollars pay for. Any anybody has the right to park on them. We're asking the school and 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 you can't get a ticket for that, right? Unless you're parking overnight in the winter. So what we're asking the school to do is direct the the families to not park there as part of the traffic management plan, but the the traffic enforcement can't tell people not to park there.
Well, they can if the town zones, the town changes that street to no parking.
They which, yes.
So I think the safety officer has said if the school can't control the parents not to not, that would be the backstop. So there is that.
Be something that the neighborhood could pursue through a separate process. Right?
Right. So so anyways, I guess my suggestion is to put in the traffic management plan that this is as one of what, you know, what the school's doing is just to commit in the traffic management plan to to instruct parents that they may not park there. And if there's any spillover, they have to park at Ripley or attempt to park at Ripley. And that so that's my must point number one. And then I guess point number two is kind of a question for Elizabeth is with regard to traffic. Does the traffic management plan? Does the traffic management plan? Like if 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 there was problems and the neighbors were, you know, if there are problems, you know, and things weren't going as planned and as the applicant has, you know, has demonstrated that they are likely to go, but it's not going that way and there's problems. Um, how does the traffic management plan operate to provide a hook for the planning board to bring the applicant back in? So for example, the traffic management plan doesn't commit the applicant to not having certain, you know, um, there's no specific mechanism in the traffic management plan that seems to provide like a threshold over which the applicant has to come back. Like the traffic gets this bad, like that we we have a decision that describes describes, you know, the adequacy of 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 their plans. So I guess we can say, you know, here's the, here's the decision and this is the our record. And so if if what's happening is different than what we have in the record, then you need to come back. But other than that, I don't really see that the traffic management plan provides for a specific way to measure what they're how how what they're doing is effective or not. It it is that, is that like, is that a question?
So the, yeah, so the specific measure would be that, you know, the the queuing line begins to create an issue, you know, out onto Virginia Road. And that, you know, there's, you know, the, you know, or there's, you know, parking in the queuing line and 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 people can't get by or, you know, people can't on Virginia Road turn into the parking lot. And and those all become issues of, you know, the traffic management plan not working. They've documented based on their organizational program and how they stagger and have families come in, how how that will work. And if it doesn't work, that will be, that will be the, you know, that will be the impact, that'll be the effect. As far as the enforcement side of it, it's already written into the decision. So the building commissioner as the zoning enforcement officer would issue, you know, a zoning, you know, violation based on their decision. You know, it could be daily fines, you know, and, you know, they would have to come back in with the planning board and and address those issues. So there there already is, you know, a checks and balance in place.
Okay.
As part of the decision.
It it just seems to me that the traffic management plan commits them to having a staggered plan. It doesn't commit them to not having queues that spill out into the street. Like, I mean, I think, but I think.
It it already, it 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 already references that, you know, as far as your your traffic consultant saying, based on the plan they've provided, you know, there isn't going to be queuing into Virginia Road.
So that gets back to the record. So it basically is like if things turn out differently than the record that the decision is based on.
Well, that's in, that's, that's in this decision.
No, I know. Sorry. I'm just trying to understand the way it works. And 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 I still, so did you get the answer, Kate? I mean, I think that, you know, based on what was written in this decision and also based on kind of how our, I'm not going to get this right. You know, but how our laws are governed in town in terms of public safety and the and then the the people who regulate those things, that would happen automatically regardless of kind of the the use of this. That like, that's my understanding is that, you know, once things are in place, that the town and and police and everybody else is going to be monitoring this, just as they would any other intersection to make sure it's it's safe. And in this case, there's actually something that could be done about if conditions become unsafe. That's that's my understanding of kind of both the how it is intended to be operated, how the the parking and drop off is intended to be operated, as well as kind of the rest of our town parking and traffic laws. So I guess I'm less concerned about the queuing. Because I have, you know, and I appreciate Mr. Haps well researched information as well as kind of the anecdotal evidences he provided. And, you know, I Burton, I think you went point by point on things and I want to be careful that we we kind of continue to go to the level you are saying, which is, you know, what what do we have the authority to weigh in on and what's our purview and what are the constraints on it? You know, to the queuing point, I dropped my kids off, not, I mean, at Ripley, at at the integrated preschool in a queue. And we all had to arrive at the same ten minute window. And it worked remarkably well. So I think kind of for every anecdote of, you know, queuing versus, you know, an efficient drop off line. It is most certainly in those those teachers' best interest and the staff's best interest to work with the families and for the families to make that work as as best as possible. So I I I have confidence that as as this school has been doing this for quite some time, that they really have a good system going and and can continue that. And I haven't used Concord Children's Center system, but I've used other drop off systems.
Okay, thank, thank you, Kristin and Kate. I want to make sure that we get all all the public comment in and I'm keeping an eye on time. I see Mr. Nagler has his hand raised. If Mr. Nagler, you could take yourself off mute and state your name and address for the record and please you have the floor.
Hi, Sam Nagler, fifty one Kenny Lane. And I am on vacation on a strange computer. I cannot figure out how to make myself be seen.
We can hear you just fine.
Disembodied voice, I guess.
Okay.
I apologize for that. I also apologize for being late to this, which was also because I couldn't figure out how to get out of this computer. Not because I spent too much time at the beach. But I'm just wondering if in the time that I missed the questions that I had asked in my email earlier today were discussed. Have not, could they be?
The, let me just, I I believe so, but if you give me one moment and I I'm going to be quick with this. In your, give me one second. I do have those at hand. Okay. Believe your your comments were around the the calculation of of site utilization. And are we making the finding that the applicant could have constructed a thirty three space parking lot? But for improving the site utilization? That that we've talked about, I I don't think that that's what utilize showing that they are improving site utilization requires that finding that they could construct a thirty three space parking lot or that they need to present, present that. I I guess we could come up with a hypothetical that they could have I had much smaller classrooms for the children and and put in a thirty three site space parking lot and that it would be an improvement of utilizing the site for a school to have more space for children and fewer spaces. But I don't think that the bylaw itself requires them them to show that they could have constructed a thirty three space parking lot but for their improved utilization. With respect to your second question on.
Can I just comment on the first question?
Okay.
Well, two things. First of all, contemporaneously with the enactment of this ordinance, there was discussion in the minutes back in nineteen seventy five and they talked about through site utilization is meaning more green space. And secondly, I think the just pure grammar, the purpose, if you say that, if you say we're going to give the site reduced parking rights. Because we're rewarding them for doing good site utilization. That's one thing, but it uses the word purpose. It's a purpose of the reduction, the site utilization. To me, that means a direct correlation.
Okay. Back to the minutes from seventy seven or, you know, sort of that 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 I I don't think I I'm aware of president of the planning board going to the considering the minutes. I think I I'm comfortable making the decision, you know, and and not the minutes from from gosh, that's forty four years ago. I'm comfortable making the decision based upon the language of of the bylaw as it was, as it was approved by town meeting. With respect to the, your point on the purpose of improving site utilization. I it is, I I I take it that you mean there needs to be a direct nexus between the requirement for a reduction in parking and a specific type of improvement and I I I I'm not sure that the language of the bylaw is, is that clear on what it means by improving site utilization? So drawing a direct nexus between that and a particular improvement is could, I think, is a challenge. But I think that we could have asked the applicant to come back with a plan that shows a a building with a a site that at great expense, they could provide additional parking or significantly reduce facilities for the children. But I think that that would probably fail the the tough city of Medford test. That that the bar is too hot, therefore too high. And and it's no longer reasonable. And but but at any rate, I don't think there's anything in the in the application process that requires them to provide that evidence. If I can move to your second question as to whether the board finds the maximum, it says, what what is the number of children the board finds to be the maximum number of children arriving and departing the facility at any one time? And which of the parking spaces is a board found to be the drop off and pickup area for that number of children? I think what we looked at was the number of vehicles and I think there's probably a one for one correlation in the calculation that that were provided by the applicant in terms of vehicles, not necessarily children, though of course it could very possibly be the case that there's siblings or carpool. And based upon the the schematics that were provided in terms of showing the queuing and and what the parking would be at that time, we I would make, it 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 seems like a reasonable determination that in accordance with the traffic management plan that at the period of 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 maximum drop off time and maximum staff time that the traffic management plan is adequate. As with respect to your your third point on our, how can we consider the twenty five spaces? The five spaces at Ripley, given the requirements of seven, seven, two, seven. We did have discussion on that. I do not consider the five spaces at Ripley to be required to meet the minimum requirements pursuant to seven, seven, two, one. Other, I consider those five spaces to be an element of the traffic management plan that the proponent is bringing to us to consider as in determining whether the 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 drop off and and pickup area and and it and, you know, the 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 plan for moving traffic through there without making it being at a detriment to the neighborhood is adequate. I think that the applicant needs to provide a minimum of twenty spaces and then areas for drop off and and pick up in accordance with the traffic management plan. So your point is, yeah, I agree that those spaces do not meet the requirements of seven, seven, two, seven for being considered as offsite parking spaces, but I do not think they are required to meet the minimum amount required under seven, seven, two, one.
So the board, can I ask a question? The board's interpretation is as long as you have one space for every teacher and employee, you can kind of count those spaces as well towards the other, towards the spaces called the children's spaces. In other words, the thirty three spaces are right up by adding three different numbers. The, you know, the one visitor space, the space that you calculate for the number of children and the teacher and employee space. Every prior version of this ordinance had had those numbers being added together as well. But I think what you're telling me is your interpretation is that you don't have to do that in this instance, that even though it's two different components of parking. You know, there's a teacher and employee warrant, not the same people, obviously, parking as the
Right.
Parents, you do not, this is the one instance. In all the prior iterations in in the version that was sent to town meeting in the town meeting warrant that ultimately got passed. And in in the actual calculation, you know, in a non waiver situation, this is the one situation where you can count, say, a given space for both the number of parents and teacher, I'm sorry, teacher and employee requirement and the maximum number of, you know, et cetera, et cetera, the language of the ordinance. Is that, I'm just trying to understand your.
Yeah, that's correct. And I I mean, speaking directly to the point of your original language, I spent a lot of time with Mr. Nagler and I appreciated receiving it. I think that the number of that that there is the 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 language of the bylaw does not require that there be a specific minimum number of spaces under the secondary calculation for the children. I believe it, it 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 states specifically a minimum number of spaces for staff and teachers. And certainly the drafters of the bylaw could have said that there would be an and at as such number of additional spaces would be required for the children to be dropped off and 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 picked up, taking into account that the parents are going to be parked for short periods of time or something like that, but it doesn't say that. Rather, it says that that a it it will allow a reduction in the number of required parking spaces. If the number of spaces provided is adequate to provide one space for every teacher and employee and to support drop, without detriment, drop off and pickup areas, doesn't say, you know, and additional spaces and drop offs and pickup areas for the maximum number of children arriving and departing. And so in my view, there's no, there's no minimum and that number of spaces that could be attributed to children to to sort of directly answer your question could be zero, as long as there are adequate drop off and pickup areas in accordance with a a a traffic management plan that in the board's determination can be utilized without detriment to the neighborhood.
Yeah, see, I just, I won't belabor it, but I reach the to me, the draft is a disorder and said everything would send up flares to alert everyone to the fact that these, these especially because it's a separate proceeding before the board of appeals with where there's none of these requirements, none of these threshold requirements that this is basically giving the planning board a bargaining chip to reduce a couple of spaces to my minor changes, minor reductions in the parking spaces. It's a trade off for more green space. I think it's it's, there are more caveats, qualifications, conditions, whatever that I've never seen packed into a single sentence. I think, you know, I think this is I I don't think this is a general zoning exception, zoning area in special, whatever you want to call it, by law, it's it's a site plan review by law, which says, oh, by the way, inherent in the site plan review, inherent in the the back and forth on the site plan review, you need to sacrifice a couple of spaces to promote, you know, the the purpose of a good site plan, that's fine. But, you know, just one example, I mean, they could have said however many teachers and employees are there at any one given time, but they said, no, we're going to count every single one of them, regardless of whether they're there or not. That they're or not. I mean, there's, I think I counted five different places where they were very putting up kind of barriers and thresholds for making the determination. So, you know, thanks for an interesting discussion, but you know, I know it's probably coming off as very arrogant to tell planning board that they're misreading a bylaw and I'm just, I'm just a guy who lives at Kenny Lane, but you know, I spent way too much time with this and, you know, this is, I do have thirty five years of legal training. This is, and I think legislative history is relevant and I think logic is relevant and I think grammar is relevant and all of those all of those sources of analysis, the opposite conclusion that we reached. I know I'm not going to change your mind.
Well, I I would like to disagree with one point. I don't think you come off as arrogant. I appreciated your input in the in in your letter, it caused me to give it a very close read. This is not my area of law, but I have spent twenty years reading statutes and I I I'm comfortable in my opinion and I respect that we disagree in it. Let me move. I see a hand raised at a telephone number ending in eight, two, four, six. If you want to speak, you can, excuse me, you can press star hat pound nine. Please identify your name and 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 address for the record, please. And if your hand is raised in error, I'll just give you a few seconds to chime in, otherwise I'll move to the next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. If you could. I can, yes. If you could state your name and your address.
Yes, this is attorney Mark Bobrowski. I represent the Concord Childcare Center. My office is in Damon Mill Square. I've been listening with interest here while I am attempting to also attend the Rockland Planning Board meeting some miles from home. I I think you have captured this very accurately, Mr. Chairman, but I want to draw one further. Sorry, I seem to have remuted. Can you hear me now?
I, yeah, I can. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, I I I just want to go thirty thousand feet up for a second and just draw something that I don't hear, at least from the proceedings and from the emails that I've seen back and forth between the board and the neighbors. This is a Dover amendment case, plain and simple. In nineteen, I believe it was nineteen seventy nine, the legislature, it could have been nineteen eighty nine, it was one or the other, decided that there was an emergency shortage of childcare facilities in the state, and so they amended chapter forty eight, section three to add the exemption. Protection, if you will, for childcare centers. So when I look at the language in the bylaw in the parking schedule and it talks about the reduction in the number of parking spaces for the purposes of improving site utilization, that that is pretty much exactly what the Supreme Judicial Court said in the Tufts College test when it looked at an educational facility. And that test for educational facilities is likewise applied equally to childcare facilities. And the court said in the Tufts College case that the question of reasonableness of a local zoning requirement as applied will depend on the particular facts of each case. So it's not a question of compliance with the bylaw outright. Each fact, each fact pattern yields a different result. And the court went on to say that a educational institution here, a childcare facility, making challenges will bear the burden of proving that local requirements are unreasonable as applied to the proposed project. And the court went on to say, the educational institution just substitute substitute childcare might do so by demonstrating that compliance would substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of a proposed structure or impair the character of the institution's campus without appreciably advancing municipality's legitimate concerns. That's at the heart of the Tufts College balancing test, and that's essentially what your parking schedule attempts to do here. If you want a reduction, go hire a traffic management expert, come up with a plan and show us how the strict wording of the bylaw, here thirty three spaces, I suppose, is not going to appreciably advance municipal interests, given the fact that adequate parking can be had with twenty spaces. So getting into the, you know, the nitty gritty of the calculation up and down is not what the Dover amendment is about. It's a balancing test. It's an ad hoc inquiry in each individual case, and it always yields a different result. And just as an example, I had the first childcare case, Petrucci versus Board of Appeals of Westwood. They had twenty foot setback requirements in the rear and the side yards. Joe Petrucci's barn was twelve feet from the side, twelve feet from the rear. Were we supposed to pick it up and move it? Anyone would concede the legitimacy of the municipal regulations, twenty foot yard requirement is a pretty common occurrence, but picking up the building defeated the balancing test. And it was adequate to keep the barn in place twelve feet, twelve feet respectively. And the barnyard daycare center is operating today as far as I know. So I just want to bring that kind of thirty thousand foot overview to the process here. I think there's absolute consistency between the language and the parking schedule for childcare facilities and the Tufts College balancing test, and I think that the board would be wise to say that not only is this a reduction that was warranted under the parking schedule, but a reduction that was warranted under the Supreme Judicial Court's test in the Medford case.
Sorry, I'm sorry for the pause there. I was speaking to you. I I thank you very much, Mr. Bobrowski, for that 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 insight and that additional input on behalf of the applicant.
Thank, thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, of course. And I I'm seeing one last hand raised, and it's Mr. Half. Is this a new point, Mr. Half?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Sure. It's a minor point, but in terms of the applicant and the construction people, not quote parking on Philip Farm Road, Miriam Road or Kenny Lane, I would request that you also add a restriction for Old Bedford Road and Virginia Road. Because many people park in front of our fence. We have two front yards. And we that property, although it's town property, it would constrain passage of cars on Virginia Road. We also oftentimes see construction vehicles parked on Old Virginia Road whenever, excuse me, on Old Bedford Road. So I would request that addition to the language.
Okay, and Elizabeth, can you advise? I I think the intent, I were my intent, and 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 thank you for for pointing that that out, Mr. Half. I I thought my, the intent was that the construction vehicles be parked on site. And is it possible that we include those two additional streets, which are
I think, I think on that page, it says, any town road is prohibited, any local town road.
Yep, so the condition specifically reads that all town, at all times, the applicant shall require all construction worker vehicles to park on the site. Parking of construction worker vehicles on any local town road is prohibited.
Okay, and I just, just to be, I don't mean to be pedantic, but are both of those local town roads? I'm just thinking about like Route sixty two being a state road.
It it also calls out in that same paragraph, and I don't know if Elizabeth wants to show it on page ten.
Okay.
Number, number three, it says, the applicant shall coordinate with the police department on the use of police details for construction vehicle activity on Virginia Road and Old Bedford Road. If it's deemed necessary, it doesn't specifically call out parking, but it says that if there's activity on the road, those two.
So to to Burton's point, I we can say vehicles on 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 any
Or state roads, but I I don't know.
Okay, so, yeah, so I don't mind, we can change it on any, you know, on any public road. The second part of that, that Kristen read deals with, this is a standard condition for its construction coordination for construction vehicle activity is for the delivery of materials. And if they have delivery of materials where the police department feels that they need a detail while those materials are being delivered and offloaded and the trucks leave, they will make that determination whether a police detail is needed for that to happen. So that's the a standard condition. It 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 doesn't mean that that they can have a police detail and then have construction work, you know, just your painters all lined up and parking on Old Bedford. That requirement specifically dealing with the delivery of construction materials.
Or I presume like they had to replace a water line or something like that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
If they had to replace a water line or something like that where they had construction vehicles operating in the right away.
Oh, correct.
Yeah. Mr. Hop, does that address your concern about the 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 Old Bedford and Virginia Road? That that we're we're saying it applies, the the restriction applies to all streets.
Yes, there's also that the applicant will inform parents that no parking is allowed on Philip Farm Road, Miriam Road and Kenny Lane. And that should also include Old Bedford Road and Virginia Road. That sentence.
Okay. And Elizabeth, do you know is are are those streets have have parking?
As as far as I know, there's, there's no posted, no parking on those signs.
Yeah.
But I think what you had commented before was making sure that that requirement that the school inform parents not to park on those roads be incorporated into the traffic management plan. Which I did a quick review and I don't think it's specifically stated in there. So that is something that can be revised and included.
And and including Old Bedford and Virginia, I think parking on those roads would not be a good idea. And so so Pat, that would need to be expressly put into the the traffic management plan and
That would be fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you for your comment. With that, I I don't believe, I'm just, I need to scroll through, but I don't think I see any further hands raised. Elizabeth, at this juncture, we've got a few edits that have been provided with last edit, the the original edit on the additional condition the building commissioner requested as well as that that change to the parking management plan, which which we need. Have I, are there anything else, any other steps that would be required before we finalize that?
Yeah, so I can run through. So there were just the the minor edits that I ran through that the board saw. There would actually be three conditions added. On the building commissioners' condition regarding the framing inspection, the condition regarding snow removal and the condition regarding the garbage pickup times. And then as far as the body of the report having the consistency of the revisions that the board made on that first page and in the parking reflected in the site plan criteria regarding the five spaces as part of the traffic management plan. And then just the the statement that under the the height requirement that the building inspector reviewed the plan. And I'm looking at my notes. And he did ask that on that existing conditions plan that the a note be added stating the average of the two lowest grades of one thirty five and one thirty six is one thirty five point five and the maximum ridge height allowed is one seventy point five.
Okay, and so that goes to my to to Stamsky, right? You need that, you need that revision made, right?
Yeah, actually, that would, that would be reflected as an additional condition.
Okay.
That prior to the issuance of a building permit that those plans be amended
Okay.
To show that revision.
Okay, that's, I got it. All right. It's it's nine o'clock, a little, a little after. Is it appropriate to then to for you, for us to propose to approve the 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 decision with the those changes, as you just noted, to be made with a final review to be made by a member of the board to make sure that they accurately reflect, but provide a vote this evening, Elizabeth.
It is the only other revisions that would be made would to make sure the dates on the reference plans are consistent with the plans that were that were submitted dated August twenty third.
I'm sorry, so that's another condition?
No, no, the plan, the the decision references all the plans that the board is including as part of your decision. So some of those plans changed with the the elevations with the change in the roof pitch. And the existing conditions plan included the two lowest points. So I just want to make sure the dates are consistent with the most current plans.
Okay. I've got you. That all makes sense. So I think then with that we are ready to move to a vote unless anybody on the board has any further comments or questions. And 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 so let me ask that, Linda, Kate.
I'm I'm going to make a comment at the, so I don't have to make it when I'm voting to approve.
Please.
Think that the record the record reflects that this plan could work and adequately mitigate impacts. And that there's a lot of evidence in the record to to support that. And and what I've kind of tested over the course of tonight and heard in response is that it doesn't work that way, that we have the authority to bring them back and potentially make changes to the approval. So I just wanted to say that's my understanding of this meeting.
Thank you very much, and I think we should, we'll give the minutes a close read when they're, when they're drafted to make sure that that is reflected. Okay, so Kristen, I didn't call on you, but it I I'm sure you would have chimed up. I think that means that we're ready, I I would move to approve the application of Concord Children's Center under section eleven point eight point seven of the zoning bylaw at two fifty Old Bedford Road, parcel forty two, twenty. Based on the findings and conditions of approval and the board's a decision, actually, let's see, Elizabeth, we, the 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 language of this suggests we're doing, we're, we're doing, we've got to approve the decision and then we approve the application. Is that not one in the same?
No, no, so, no, it's, you know, approving the application.
Subject to the findings and conditions in the decision.
Consist, well, approve the application consistent with the decision as amended tonight.
Yeah, okay, so I I I would make make a motion to approve the application of Concord Children's Center as I, as I, as it stated in more detail previously, based upon the findings and conditions in the decision as amended, it's discussed this evening. And would authorize the chair clerk, the 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 chair clerk, I guess, or another member of the board to review the final decision. And and then to authorize the chair clerk or town planner to sign the decision.
Second.
Great, thank you, Kristen. Just before going to a vote, let me ask, is, who is, we have any volunteers to review it? If not, I will do that. The final, the final, final. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll I'll take care of that. So if I can move to a vote, Kristen, I'll start with you. How would you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Linda, how would you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Kate?
Yes.
Okay, and I am also on a vote in favor. So that, that's our our approvals and subject to the final review of you know, the final decision as as discussed, as drafted, it's discussed tonight with those revisions. And I think, Elizabeth, we're done with this second item of tonight, right? Okay. And thank you, Pat, and the other members of the applicants team for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you to the planning board. You've put a lot of energy into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we now have a couple of items to move to administrative items. We've got the, we've already covered the law release from caller lane. We've got to review the potential annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendments. And I will say that Haley, in her wisdom, realizing that we had some very lengthy items tonight, suggested that maybe we had to save some of these for discussion when we, it's, we wouldn't be so so late in the evening. I think though, if as if anybody has particularly come prepared to talk to food trucks, additional sustainability measures, the farm amendment and a meeting with, I guess, a meeting with the ZBA, let's do discuss that. There's no reason to delay that. Does anybody want to raise any particular points on those? I I I certainly want to make sure we we come back and consider Kate's far amendment discussion, but I'm, I think it deserves a good vetting.
Um, can I, can I just? If we can just do a tiny discussion, Elizabeth, did you have anything to say about far? Like had did you, had you, had you had any like big? Um, my understanding where we are far is that we discussed it a couple of weeks ago and we came out of that with sort of some action items and I thought had you had some direction. And we, I was going to present some more alternatives to the board. We haven't discussed it since, so I think it's still on my plate. Is that kind of your understanding or recollection?
It is, but I think the the last I'm going to say chart that you did with what the board discussed with the having, having two metrics for the floor area ratio, reducing the floor area ratio for just standard, regular construction, but then having a slightly larger floor area ratio of people implement certain sustainability measures. And it was going to be coming, I, there was generally, I think, support for that. And I think it was coming back and figuring out how you go about defining those sustainability measures. Because it has to be very clear and because it has to be very clear and because it cannot be a determination by anybody in the building inspections division. So if you know, if it's just a checklist. Is so I think I think it does need a it definitely does need a more vetting and more discussion on on how you're going to do that and with with all zoning bylaw amendments. You know, I'm I'm mindful and I hope the board's mindful of many of them do have direct impacts on town staff. And so how do how do we go about that current currently? You know, every builder, every person knows how to do the one calculation. So while the intention of having the graduated scale, I I definitely agree with. It it's just how do you? How do you go about implementing that? And I think that's what needs to be further discussed and refined.
Great. So we have a lot of work to do. And when's the end? What's like when we need to be at the finish line with all of you that you just mentioned, like January or something?
As far as when the warrant closes?
Well.
It's sometime in January.
Yeah, or do the public hearings come first before the warrant closes or is after?
No, no, the warrant closes and then you have your public hearings.
We have me, we have meetings.
We have a meeting where we would get input.
We have planning board meetings where we'll discuss them and go through them, and then the hearing where we sort of do the preview for town meeting and then like that happens after the warrant. I just just to second what Elizabeth said, I mean, for me, the thing that I really want to see is is like how we define the sustain sustainability in 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 the most concrete, if there's examples and and we could take an approach of something like saying, you know, if it's if it's fossil fuel free, I mean, that's a really easy thing to determine, right? Because they there's no gas hookup, right? Or or no, no oil tank or something like that, or it could be something where there's a a third party certification, right? So it's not the town doing that, but they've got to provide, and this would be crazy, but you know, a lead certification.
So so and we like now we're kind of getting into it, but like, who? Who does this belong to you right now? Does that belong to me to to sketch this out or Elizabeth or is somebody else volunteering to do it? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, do I? Like, who? A work plan for this?
Well, I maybe, I mean, I I I would suggest maybe between, I mean, Haley had seen some really good stuff, you know, that was being done in North Hampton and the like, maybe connecting with her on.
I feel like North Hampton has become just like vague idea of like wonderful thing, but it's when you actually look at like, they don't have, they don't have a sustain like an idea for.
Oh, okay, fair, fair, fair enough. I I have.
It's like, oh, North Hampton.
I have halcyon memories of North Hampton, that's.
But pin me down to something. So Elizabeth, do you have time to draft something for sustainability in the next like, you know, two weeks? And if you don't, I'll do it.
Um, I I do not, and I also don't have the expertise to do that. I do know that the interviews for the sustainability director were yesterday and so, you know, hopefully there'll be somebody on board.
I don't know.
So let's talk about that timeline, though, Kate, I I appreciate you because I think this is a really good thing for us to pursue. We just have to do it in a way that actually, you know, works with town staff and and is palatable, you know, and town meeting. I think we we actually do have a fair bit of time here. I mean, we'll probably have between now and January, I guess, roughly five more meetings, Elizabeth. So so maybe we can see where the things go with the sustainability director, or maybe Haley might have some direct suggestions, and they may not be North Hampton, but in terms of of similar requirements, I could also potentially reach out to some.
Anyway, I just thought of what to do. I think the next step is not to draft a sustainability thing, but to put together the milestones of getting to the finish line. So like, on this day, have something drafted on this day, like, you know, circulate it to whoever it needs to be vetted to on this day. You know, there should be a public comment. No?
Yeah, I I don't think, I mean, you have, you have at least nine more meetings until the warrant closes. So I I think between, I think Kate and I and, you know, Hallie can help me, I think we we can come up with something and and, you know, the sustainability, new sustainability director hopefully will be, you know, on board in a month. So I'm I'm okay with, you know, you know, advancing this, you know, down the road in, you know, like a month, and I think I think we'll be there.
Yeah, okay. Um, can I ask Elizabeth, why is food trucks a planning board issue? I mean, they're not, it's not buildings. It's not. It's not permanent land utilization.
So there's there, there's been, you know, different building commissioners have interpreted different ways and, you know, it's and some have, you know, interpreted that, you know, it's, you know, currently, you know, food trucks aren't defined in the zoning by law, and so anything that's not defined is prohibited. But it it's, you know, is it use of land and you know, no, you know, they, you know, park on public streets and you know. But when it when it starts going on to private property, whether it's in a commercial district, if a food truck goes there every single day, you know, the building commissioners have determined that, yeah, that's that that's begins to be a use of the property and it's not, it's not defined in the zoning by law, and so it's prohibited.
Is is wouldn't that use need to be permitted by the health department?
The health department does license.
License.
Trucks.
Yeah.
But if if a food truck, you know, sits in a parking lot every single day, previous building commissioners have said, well, that's you know, that's not a use that's defined in the zoning by law, so it's prohibited.
How common is it?
Um, well, right now it's not that common because they're the two previous building inspectors. They've they're used sometimes for town events. And, you know, private, you know, private residential properties, you know, if you have a birthday party and, you know, that person brings a food truck for a birthday party.
So those schools, sometimes they've gone to schools to, you know, thank teachers and stuff like that. So I mean, it seems like they're very temporary applications. So I was just thinking about your suggestion of if they were parked.
I think there's a there's been the concern before. There has been a little bit of discussion about this by the planning board that there's a concern that they will become more regularly parked, like, you know, the food trucks around MIT, for example, right? If you've been there, there's food trucks that are there every day and have been there every day for, you know, forever.
Right, and that's that's the conversation the board has had previously on the on the much broader scale. And you you did get input from, you know, all the brick and mortar stores and and so, but you know, like the the, you know, building commissioner just brought this up again because, you know, just at town functions or at a private residence. You know, he feels that that that's a different situation than the issue that brick and mortar restaurants are concerned about.
Sorry, somebody bring me up to speed on what I'm missing the first step of this. What what is what's the genesis of this issue coming before us?
Well, it's a potential, it's the potential, the the request is coming from the billing commissioner that we would. Well, he says formalize a policy, so presumably turn that into a zoning by law, a proposal for town meeting that would allow for food. So I guess right now they're saying food trucks aren't allowed in town. Which is an interesting interpretation. I'm not sure I entirely agree with that, but it says they're not allowed, and they would like us to say, but they are allowed on town land with approval from the town manager and at a private residence. Right? So that means right now there's an outright prohibition based upon the policy of the building commissioner. But they and and you could conceivably get in trouble with the building commissioner if you have a burrito truck come to your kid's birthday party.
Okay, well, let's petition the building commissioner not to interpret it that way because it doesn't seem like it needs to be. And then we don't have to go through the motions of making an amendment to the by law.
No, which is which is fine. That that's that's how he if if somebody gets a food truck for their their private residence, the the building commissioner or the health issues a license for that food truck. And and the building commissioner doesn't take any enforcement action, or if at recreation department for a summer camp brings a pizza, you know, food truck, the building inspector doesn't take any enforcement action on.
But he does want us to drop, be able to draw a line between that activity and somebody parking essentially to having a semi-permanent business on on the.
And that is what I'm hearing isn't happening yet.
Yeah, exactly.
Because it's prohibited. They don't allow it.
Well, exactly. So, but oh, is he saying that we should allow it?
He's saying we should avoid avoiding.
Oh, then why if it's not happening and he doesn't want it to happen, then why do we have to fix it?
Because he doesn't want to be put into a position of interpreting when there's a single use of a food truck at Thoreau, or, you know, and for for teacher appreciation day or something like that.
Permanent, he's not going to take enforcement action, and we just said.
We, I think what he's asking for is to us to essentially have a zoning bylaw amendment that says, you know, a one-time use, it's properly permitted by the health department. It is it is allowable, but you've got to go through, you've got to go through a special permit process if you want to have a food truck on in your parking lot for a week.
Okay, so I'm I'm just going to close the conversation on this because it 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 has gone beyond what is really needed and the status quo right now, there has not been significant outcry or, you know, enforcement requests. So I'll go back to the building commissioner and we'll we'll have another conversation about this and 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 see if there's a different, different mechanism.
If you could tell them that we're too hot right now to deal with things that aren't problems yet, that would be that would be concise way of saying. But I mean, you probably, I mean, you you have a nice list of things and we're just kind of helping to prioritize it. So that was your first thing, right? Was to go and find, you know, brainstorm that list. So we don't have to shoot them down all right now.
No. So I I do want to make sure because it's now already nine thirty, I do want to and I I'll send an email to the board members that aren't here about going to the Board of Appeals meeting on the ninth, just to see if the Board of Appeals has any thoughts on amendments, or I can, since we we still, we do have some time on the night, I can just ask the board if they have anything they wanted to discuss with the planning board. And we can do it that way because I I currently think the board has has a lot, the the only item with the Board of Appeals that I see to have a discussion with them would be about adding the sustainability criteria to the special permit list. So but other than that, I don't think there's any real significant bylaw amendments that the board's proposing other than your continued conversation about the the Road Depot Business District. So on the ninth, I can go back, I can go to the Board of Appeals and just say as part of the whole sustainability town sustainability goals, get the input from the Board of Appeals about incorporating a sustainability criteria for special permits.
I mean, I I think the discussions with them are useful.
Yeah. I I guess it may be instead of putting ourselves right on the on the September ninth meeting schedule, though, check with it. Do that, as you suggested, Elizabeth, and see if they'd like to meet with us. I I agree with you, Kristen, I found that the last time we met with the Board of Appeals, I was quite surprised by the feedback we were getting from them. And I thought that was valuable. So if they'd like to, if it it would be good, I think, to have a joint session.
Um, at the same time, I I think it's always better to have something that we're floating and getting their reaction on than coming on to them with generic concepts.
I agree, I I agree. And so maybe that meeting should take place a little bit later as we've got these these ideas developed, unless there's something else that they 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 think is is pressing. But I do think it would be good to go to them with specific specifics.
So currently, the two I I'll just give them a heads up on the ninth would be on the floor area ratio amendment, because that would impact them if there's any provision for, well, because of the special permit provision, and then the sustainability criteria for site plan, I mean, for special permits.
Okay.
Okay, so yes, and maybe the message is like, do you guys have any preliminary feedback? This is what they're thinking. And like, by the way, once they get a tax proposal, you know, guys, I'll have another, you know, bite at the apple in terms of providing feedback. Is that kind of the way you're thinking about Elizabeth?
Yep, yeah, definitely.
Okay. And I have just realized my laptop's about to die because I forgot to get my cord. I'm just looking at the remaining items here. We've got upset the agenda memo and back to the agenda. We had.
Subdivision rules and regs and neighborhood conservation district.
Right, and I saw that case on neighborhood conservation districts, and my takeaway from that was don't try to do a neighborhood conservation district as a general by law. You need to meet the requirements of the zoning by law or the preserve, what was the other section like?
The Historic Districts Commission.
Historic.
The Historic Districts Commission. I don't, I'd have to wait and speak to senior planner Heather Gill on whether they've already had a conversation about this or not. I just can't remember. But in speaking with town council today about a number of things. They had also worked with Lexington on looking into this and had a conversation with Wellesley. I guess Wellesley's had neighborhood conservation districts for a while and a a few of them are are not they they aren't aren't really doing what they are intending because you end up, most of them are designed, they have people in that neighborhood on this committee basically telling their neighbors what they can and can't do and the the tensions become such that a lot of times they, you know, just don't go, you know, where the by law intended. So he said it's it's really created, you know, some challenges in some of those those neighborhoods that has has not been it's not been that that nice. So but that was just.
Sorry, go ahead, Bert.
So so as to the general advisability of any particular neighborhood conservation district. I I guess the Kate, if I'm not mistaken, well, what do we, I don't think you're proposing that we 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 try to move forward with any particular neighborhood conservation district, but rather I'll create the framework for somebody to create a neighborhood conservation district. Is that? Is that correct?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask Elizabeth, is it correct that the last time this discussion came up? Was there an idea that, well, let's not bother doing a framework before we have a neighbor that's willing to go through it because it could just be a big waste of time? Is that true?
Um, I don't, I don't.
That's what I heard.
Or why did, why, because it seems like when we've discussed this before, like, and we never got drilled too far down in it. But we always said, like, oh, we looked at one neighborhood and they weren't interested, so we just left it. But it but I guess that brings up the question, I think that Burton just well encapsulated, which is like, should we move forward with a framework and then that's there for neighborhoods to move into rather than having a neighborhood be upfront?
Would, which is fine, the board can do that, but when you look at all these other examples as far as the framework, it's not just the planning board who's moving forward. So, I mean, something of this caliber or, you know, this level of change in the zoning by law. Because you're going to, based on that Brookline case, you are going to have to frame it in a way under zoning that does meet the requirements of forty A or and and you're going to have to bring in either this historical commission to be, you know, part of this, or you're going to have to speak with the selectmen about the process of, you know, formulating these new committees and you know, whether, you know, there's over sixty-three, you know, standing committees.
Why does it have to be, yeah? Why does it have to be, yeah, I don't want another committee. Why does it have to be a committee, I guess?
Well, so who's gonna oversee it?
Um, well, if it can be, maybe there's some really basic constraints that the Bill, the Bill, the Building Department oversees. Like, if you're in this district, you can't do this. It's really basic. It's not, and it sounds horrible to have this committee have all this discretion over what neighbors can and can't do. I agree with that.
Um, I, 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 I can tell you adamantly that no, the Building Department is not gonna sit there and tell somebody that, you know, that's too big, or.
No, no, it's just basic zoning. This is just, I'm not saying it's too big or too small, but it's just, there's just a, there's thresholds that they, well, like, if you're in this district, you can't tear down your house and build it to two hundred, you know, two hundred fifty percent of its size, because these houses were all built during World War Two and they're all ranch houses. So you can do whatever you want, but it can't be, it can't be um, eight thousand square feet.
And, and I think that goes to the point of what we were trying, why we initially had been discussing this was, what does this buy us if we are able to move this forward? And that's that larger discussion about, um, I think we were trying to preserve, you know, different types of homes and prevent, you know, or minimize mansionization. And this was kind of one strategy toward it, but it wasn't all the way thought out. And if there are other better strategies that have a better chance of being enacted and actually doing something, I think we should pursue those. And that's why I think this one has never gone forward, is because we really felt like it had to be initiated, you know, from the, the residents of the neighborhood, um, and, and that's the chicken and egg. Well, are they waiting until we have the framework in place before they initiate it? Or should we see how many groups initiated, and then we can say, oh, okay, well, there's interest, now we can create a framework?
And, and I was also wondering if in, in the anticipation of twenty-two, twenty-nine, doing something um, with that, that coming in where you have a de novo situation and having the framework for a neighborhood conservation district then could be applied as opposed to going forward with development of that um, property without the framework existing that could be utilized in something on a de novo basis, because that, that would be, you know, you'd have your chicken and egg at the same time, I guess.
Yeah, it becomes problematic when you propose these districts in reaction to a project, for sure.
What?
Well, I, I, I can tell you that's probably illegal.
That's what I meant by problematic.
So, eh, but, so two-two-nine, two-two-two-nine Main Street is, um, you know, that, that's a, that's a completely, you know, that's a completely different, um, I'm gonna say completely different animal. Um, because, you know, the parameters for how that gets developed are, you know, likely going to be established you know, be- before it's handed off to a developer to build. Uh, so, you know, the, the, the town, you know, should, should that whole thing move forward? The town's gonna have the ability before it hands it off to define how, how they want to see that property developed and what are gonna be the limitations. Um, and and I, and I, and I think that will be reflected in, you know, some type of zoning measure, if not just part of the whole disposition, you know, process. So I don't, I don't think you necessarily need to have a, you know, this type of neighborhood conservation district for two-two-two-nine Main Street. I, I, neighborhood conservation districts I see are, are something for, you know, that have been utilized for existing neighborhoods to, you know, again, as Kristen said, you know, address, you know, how the neighborhood is changing and well, I understand, Kate, you know, the whole point of, you know, having the bylaw available, um, if, you know, a neighborhood wants to do this, but to move forward and have the bylaw available, you, you still, you still have to do a significant amount of work. Is, you know, is it going to be, you know, is it seventy percent of the homeowners have to agree? I mean, you're still talking about something that takes a vote of town meeting, that's, that would need a two-thirds, you know, a super majority vote to do. So and as far as the oversight, if it's, you know, you have, you, a lot of those neighborhood conservation districts had this ambiguous, you know, neighborhood character and so to be able to have the framework, you're talking about specific things, that's gonna be different for each neighborhood. So how can you have a, a specific thing for a different neighborhood?
Um, great question. Um, so yeah, so I, I, I agree with everything you're saying in terms of, I guess, my position is, this could potentially have the most impact on controlling mansionization relative to all the options. And, and also, it's probably the most difficult. Um, so it seems like there's a big upside and a big, you know, downside. Um, so I guess my, and I, I don't think that we would be able to do that for this year. I do think we should maybe keep looking at it. So you're bringing up um, challenges, and I think that we should continue to look at it, see, is, are there ways to overcome these challenges? And then if there's not, then we can kind of get to the end and say, we really looked at this.
Well, wait, I, I'm curious to know why you think this has the potential for the biggest impact, and if so, what related mechanism could we do that's not reliant on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis? Why, why do you think this is?
There was one of those, we, we're proposing, I don't, I don't know that there is one. I mean, I think you're.
What, what made you think it's like a good one, though? That's, I so, focus on that piece for a minute. You're like, this is, this is a good way that could control, potentially, if it was done right. I was, I'm curious why.
Okay, uh, okay, uh, okay. I think, I'm saying that because I think if, when you create these districts, it's a way to regulate different aspects of the way the lots are built out that you can't do just under the general bylaw.
Ah, see, that's interesting. And so I guess I'd want to, and we don't have to do it tonight, you know, figure out what the difference would be. Why would you be able to do it in a neighborhood conservation district versus, you know, generally? What would, what would be the difference that would allow that? Um, and, and I guess it would have to do with how you define the neighborhood and the character and things like that, in which case, you know, is that something that we could do townwide and, at all?
So, which, it doesn't seem like it. So part, part of, part of the, you know, if you looked at, you know, some of these other community bylaws, you know, part of um, the, the whole issue is, um, you know, who, who, who gets to, you know, define what that neighborhood is? You know, who, you know, who says that, you know, that particular neighborhood is, you know, is something of a value or, you know, a character that, you know, it, it should be preserved and.
The answer is the town, right? The town approves it at the town meeting, so the majority of people at town meeting are saying that. That's just like anything else we do.
Okay, but now, but now, but now you're, you're talking about, um, you know, a certain percentage of, of a neighborhood basically going to town meeting and imposing a, a restriction on one particular neighborhood when, you know, there may be people in that neighborhood that don't want it, but everybody else is convinced two-thirds of the rest of the town, who doesn't even live in that neighborhood, to say yes. So, I, I mean, I, I, I understand the principle and, and I agree with what it's trying to do. Um, I, I personally disagree with that mechanism. I, I just think it is, um, it's, it's far too challenging for a, a town to go through that process to define a neighborhood and have town meetings say yes, um, when there could be people in that neighborhood that don't want it. You're, 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 you're basically establishing a zoning bylaw that's only for a particular neighborhood, and it's not, you're, you're not can, you know, implementing a zoning bylaw that's town-wide where everybody.
We do that all the time. We're gonna do that with Thoreau District. And how's that different from the historic districts?
So, I mean, but, but that's why the, the process for a historic, to establish a historic district is, is much different. I mean, you have, they have to go to establish a district, they have to have a certain, you know, percentage of the people and the, and, you know, the homeowners and.
We can do that with this stuff. Right? We can use that same process to do this, to make sure that, like, you know, whatever percentage of the neighborhood has to be on board with that, we use that same percentage. I agree that we, I mean, we've never tried to impose this on a neighborhood that no one wanted it. But in every neighborhood, you're probably gonna have, like, two landowners that are, like, getting ready to sell their, you know, like, moving into the, you know, next phase of life, and they want to make as much money, and that's why we have mansionization. So I don't, I guess I don't, I thought we were imposing, if the town collectively wanted to make these changes, that it was okay, you know, to have some people be less happy about that, if others.
I mean, how, how large does the district have to be? I mean, for example, in the historic district, last year, two houses joined to be in the Main Street Historic District, right? And, and so, maybe you could have a small group that want to be a neighborhood, and people could join. It doesn't have to be every house on the block, does it? Or it does it? I mean, does it have to be a square?
I don't, I, I don't know. That's not, that's not, it, it's different for each bylaw. So, um, obviously, so it's now quarter to ten, um, and.
Sorry.
Um, no, no, don't, don't apologize. This is just, this is.
We love this stuff.
It's an.
Linda, you're making the meeting go long.
It's, it's a complicated thing.
Just talk at, like, another meeting, and they present, like, what is a district? Like, what are some successful examples? What are some unsuccessful examples? Can we do that? Or is everyone on the board just like, Kate, please drop us? Well, I, I, I still feel like we need that bigger picture looker. What are the most, what are the things most likely to impact mansionization and, you know, uh, housing, um, I don't want to even say affordability, but how, housing diversity? And, and, and see where that one falls on the list before we go too far down that road. That, that would be my suggestion. Linda, Burton?
I, I will admit, I'm a little unclear on, on the, the ask, the, the i- in terms of if we're creating a mechanism but to, would enable neighborhoods to be able to do this, right? I guess, is that laying, I, I, I'm not sure what that looks like from a zoning bylaw perspective. Is it laying out what, what are the minimum requirements for a neighborhood conservation district or not? Uh, or are we instead looking to begin imposing um, restrictions that are of a conservation focus that would be, I get, I presumably not on a neighborhood basis, but would be townwide. I, I, I'm not exactly clear on that. I'm not sure what a neighborhood conservation district looks like. I mean, Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not a framework within the zoning bylaw per se for what a historic district could look like. Rather, there are historic districts that have particular clauses that are applicable to them. Is that correct?
Uh, so there's actually um, specific enabling legislation that, that is different than Chapter forty A um, for the establishment of historic districts.
But then, and those are established, though, and, and tho- tho- those are established within our zoning bylaw, right?
No.
No?
Well, a historic, a historic district is completely different, enabling legislation.
Okay, so, so there's a state statute that provides the framework?
Um, to, to be very, very specific, Concord was um, more forward-thinking than the state statute and um, actually established its Historic Districts Commission through a special charter. Um, so it, it is slightly different um, than the current state um, statute that allows for the establishment of historic districts, but um, there, there are certain nuances and differences between the charter and the state statute, but yes, it's relatively. The state statute has much more uh, specific requirements for the establishment of a district than the town's uh, Historic Districts Commission Charter.
Okay, and, and.
Or enabling legislation, I should say.
So, 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 Kate, I, I take it then you're, you're looking for something that's kind of like that enabling legislation at a town level? It says if you're going to do a neighborhood cons- a neighborhood, it says a neighborhood conservation district is a thing, and if you're going to do it, it's gotta, you've gotta meet the following requirements. It's seventy percent of the uh, uh, the, the property owners in the area, for example, you know, elect to join through some process that's defined or something like that. Is that, is that what you're looking to do? Or are there specific restrictions that you're looking to uh, enable on, that are tailored to specific concerns like teardowns or mansionization or what have you?
I am looking to explore whether this is a potentially useful tool to control man- mansionization. Um, I think the framework that we would put in place would explain how a district is established, and then what it means to be a district. And I don't know much more than that. Like, I, I would.
Um, okay, so just um, to, to move this along, I will um, I will contact the communities that, um, that have them and um, and get the planners' opinions on whether they've been effective in controlling mansionization. I mean, it's, it's anecdotal information, but it's still, um, you know, that planner's perspective.
Hey, Elizabeth, I just do a question on that. How do you know which towns have enacted something like this? Like, do you have, like, a sort, like a database? Because I was looking at this with the fossil fuel thing, like, how do you start, you know, you can Google it. Is that what you do? Or do you have, like, databases where you're like, I'm gonna, I have a way to, like, somebody to call?
Wouldn't that be nice? Unless M A P C has something like that, because they're regional.
So M A P C does have um, has some information on the different bylaws that's, um, they're, the communities they serve have. Um, and then another, uh, some part of it is um, just being able to accurately Google search it for, so you're, you're only in Massachusetts. Um, and then the, the, the other one, which I don't like to use too often, is, um, there's a Mass Planners List Serve where you can post a question. But since um, there's, it, it's, it's hundreds of emails on a weekly basis, so I, I, if I have a question for the Mass Planners List Serve, I either make Marcia or Heather Gill do it.
Okay.
I just, I can't, I just can't take, handle any more email.
Great. I, thank you for your suggestion on moving forward. I, I think that's helpful. And, and maybe we can, maybe you and I can talk offline.
Okay.
About it, rather than, because it seems like this is mostly the bee in my bonnet, and there's a, a lot I don't know. I'm not necessarily advocating for something. I just want to become more educated.
Okay.
Okay. Um, with that, let's, let's draw this up as, as quickly as we can. They, we've got, um, we've already done the, oh, subdivision rules and regs uh, updates. Um, anything there, Elizabeth?
Um, so just, just real quick, um, the, previously the board had talked about just some, you know, long, low-hanging fruit changes that could be done in the zoning bylaw um, to, you know, either address sustainability or actually, and as it relates to, like, low-impact drainage design and and then just some other minor amendments, instead of uh, waiting for a consultant to help with a complete overhaul of the bylaw. So, just wanted to start to kind of get the board thinking about that and that, what is that list of what you think some of those changes could be? But I also do want to um, look in my budget to see if there are funds to have um, Town Council help with the, the, the one-six, was it, well, the unsuitable land part and um, those two sections uh, to get their help on how to uh, amend those sections based on, you know, the, the challenges the board has had recently uh, in interpreting those. So so I do know that Engineering Division has a couple of ideas about um, how to incorporate L I D measures in, in a more simple fashion. LID measures in, in a more simple fashion into it and, um, part of it just, no, sorry, part of it just deals with, um, you know, the requirements when somebody submits a subdivision plan. Um, you know, that those items be included in that plan. And if they're not included, um, then they either, you know, ask for a waiver or provide um, specific documentation on, you know, you know, why they can't do it. So.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was kind of confused as to whether you were talking about the additional sustainability measures that would be under the zoning bylaw amendments or the subdivision rules and regulations as a threshold matter. Do we think that we can put sustainability measures in the subdivision rules and regs?
Um, well, some sustainability measures as it relates to design issues. Um, so like, um, requiring LID measures and not structured, LID measures first and not structured drainage. Um, and, um, requiring, you know, discussing with engineering and the fire department, you know, not requiring twenty-four feet of pavement. Um, or requiring, you know, much, you know, a little less pavement, much wider greens, you know, green strip between the road and the sidewalk. Um, so those types of design, design elements into sustainability.
Okay, I, I could see that being permissible, right? I mean, the, the, the design standards for road construction and the like.
Yes, yeah, those, those sustainability measures.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to see a, a, that a whiff of sustainability in the subdivision rules. Um, that would be nice. So the proposal then is you're, you're looking at, at, as a interim measure before there, any kind of rewrite of the subdivision rules and regs. Identifying, like you said, the low hanging fruit of, of, uh, working with town council and the rest.
Yes.
Okay. Anything needed from the board at this juncture?
No.
Okay.
Not unless somebody has a specific idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought yours were good starts for sure.
Okay. Um, really quickly to complete the agenda for the evening. Uh, the, any, any liaison updates or, uh, reports?
No.
Are people making it to their assigned meeting committees? They know when they are. Uh, are they engaged? I know, I know, and you are, you, you've got, provided some comments previously.
I haven't, I haven't, um, been advised of any, uh, additional meetings, so.
Summer might be a, a lull too.
I know CPC met last week, but I was, I was out of town, so I was not able to attend and in the wrong time zone to dial in. So, uh, nothing to report from, from my, from mine that I, I sit on. Um, just they can quickly, if anybody out there is still listening, general public comment. I see there are a few, few folks who are still with us. If anybody has a public comment, um, otherwise we will wrap things up.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will our next meeting be virtual?
Oh, I, um,
Good question. What's, what's on the agenda? This, is that the one on the is that the next one is on the fourteenth or before then?
Uh, your next meeting is on the fourteenth.
That's the fourteenth.
And I will not be at that meeting. So if anybody else is not going to be there, please speak up before then, so we don't
I, I may not be there either.
Do we know what's on the agenda?
Um, you, you have one, uh, really, um, really minor formula business, um, special permit in West Concord. It, it won't be controversial, I, I promise. And, uh,
I'm really intrigued now, Elizabeth.
Next to Chase Bank, the building next to the new Chase Bank being built. There's a insurance company in there um, that was bought by Eastern Insurance Company. So Eastern Insurance is a formula business.
No kidding?
We just have to look at what the, what the number is in that town. But anyway, we're getting it.
So, um,
So otherwise, lots, lots of time to discuss.
Uh, and otherwise, I mean, the board, um, needs to move forward as far as, um, you know, so I'm preparing, you know, as far as drafts for the throw business, throw depot business district and the board moving forward with that discussion. Um, and then, um, what else is on my list? Oh, um, I, uh, met with, uh, Will Holden, the land manager and Liz McKinley. Um, so you will have, um, some proposed updates for the tree preservation bylaw rules and regs. Um, and then, um, possibly again, um, the tree preservation bylaw itself. Um, now that, um, the land manager is on board and um, if you haven't met Will Holden, he's, um, phenomenal. And as far as what he's been doing for the tree preservation bylaws. Uh, so it may be having him become the reviewing agent and the enforcement agent instead of the building commissioner. Um, but I need to, I need to check with um, town council on that, uh, whether, um, that is even permissible. As a general bylaw, it may have to be the building commissioner as the enforcement agent. So I just need to check on that one, but so moving along with some changes to that and
So, so if I may, I mean, with possibly the exception of the throw business, uh, excuse me, the, the thorough depot. Um, pretty, probably not big draws. Um, and I want, just want to circle back to Linda's question about whether it'll be in person or not. I mean, I think at this stage, right, if it's in person, the, uh, we're going to be sitting around masked up doing that. And, uh, I, I, I haven't been upset, I, I've been out, been out of the country. I haven't been obsessing about where the, uh, the numbers are in, in Massachusetts and where, where things are looking. But I, I could see us doing it if it's, if it's, if we anticipate it'll be a low turnout meeting, doing it in person. And, and when we want to get down to brass tacks, uh, discussions around zoning bylaw changes, I, I think it would be very helpful to be in person. But maybe we can make that call as we get a little closer. Linda's
Yeah, you can, you can, you can make that call forty-eight hours before your meeting. It's, I mean, it's, so, I mean,
Okay.
We keep having conversations, you know, with the public health director. So, um, you know, it's really part of, partly her guidance as well.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Bader.
I, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, each and every one of you. Thank you, Elizabeth Burton, Linda, Kristen, Kate. Um, you probably don't hear thank you enough. And I've been watching you guys long enough to know that you tackle difficult projects, sensitive projects, difficult petitioners and commenters with uh, integrity and, um, diplomacy and I, I for one truly appreciate it. So I, I wanted you guys to hear that.
Thank you very much. That is nice to hear. It's funny, you know, I, I just a personal reflection on that, you know, I, we've got an example of a hot button issue tonight and I, I give a lot of thought about, you know, here we are as these volunteers to get on this board and we end up at, you know, sometimes I, I feel like I might walk down the street and somebody kick me in the shin after some of these meetings. So I do, I do appreciate that.
And, and the plug for any, all of the six people who watch this video afterwards. Um, it's, we always can use new members, you know, each year, and it's a great way to learn a whole different thing is I think you're, you're very involved as well. Um, but so it's been a great perspective being on, on this side of the room.
Well, that's a good segue to my follow on. Quick question is, is there anyone on the uh, planning board designated as a liaison to the, um, Concord Housing Authority or any of the other uh, housing, affordable housing organizations, CHDC, et cetera?
Yeah. Elizabeth, there isn't?
No, I don't, I
I don't think so. There's like energy related, like energy and, and climate. And then there's the West Concord and then the, um, yeah, I don't know how the, the ones that we liaise with are selected though, as actually, it's a good point. Maybe they asked for us.
Yeah, so most of them, it's actually in kind of like almost in the committee charge that there be a liaison, but, um, but no, I, I, I don't believe a planning board member has ever been a liaison to those, um, committees. So um, it, it, it's definitely something I will, I will bring up with, uh, the Liz Rust and have her go back to those committees and, uh, and, uh, yeah, that's a good point.
I'm, I'm not trying to make more work for any of you, but I think that particularly with respect to the thorough depot, for instance, that is going to um, be a situation where we will all do much better if there is closer cognizance on the parts of the housing agencies and the planning board as we go forward. Um, I think it will solve problems and avoid problems and misunderstandings down the road.
I, I think that I, I'm very surprised we don't have somebody. I, I, I get, I get some exposure through the, uh, you know, associative, uh, uh, factor being, because I, I'm the representative that's on the CPC and, and there, there are representatives of of, of the, the C, Concord. I, I can, I can never keep the, the two or three different groups straight, but a lot of affordable housing issues dealt with there. And, and as I think about it, I'm quite surprised of the, you know, considering where we do have liaisons that we don't have anybody on, on housing. Elizabeth, that would be great if you could follow up with, uh, Elizabeth Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion and the, and the appreciation.
That was more important, actually. The appreciation was more important.
All right. Um, with that, I, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Uh, I thank you all for your, doing your homework for tonight's meeting. I know it was a big one. I spent a lot of time getting ready for it. And I appreciate everybody's input and comments on it. And I think with that, we can adjourn. So everybody, I'll see you, uh, in two weeks. Take care.